So for the next, today and for a half of day tomorrow, we're going to go through some items. And we try to keep these retreats and these budget discussions at a 30,000-foot level. It's staff's opportunity formally to hear from commissioners in this type of setting. But as we go through the next day and a half, we will stay at a 30,000-foot level. And every once in a while, we'll dip down to a lower level. And there's nine topics that we will somewhat dip below 30,000-foot level to talk about. Starting, and Lauren will give us our forecast update like she always does. That starts the day off. That's high level. But then we will dip into vehicle acquisition planning that Lindsay will lead. It's a different post-COVID time on how we are acquiring vehicles. There's budget impact to that process. Then Lynn's going to talk about, Lynn Packer's going to talk about sales tax, CIP. And he's got great news for you there because his sales tax is just not stretching as far as it used to. There's real issues and problems there that he wants to bring up, and we can talk about it. And then we'll have a short break. And then Tanya will give an update on overall county CIP projects and lease information. So we'll dip down into the weeds and talk about that. We will also be in the weeds at 1:00 when we talk about senior center funding strategies. That's controversial for the commission. We want to get some reconciliation to that in a way forward. Then we'll go back to 30,000 feet again and talk about two global issues. Community program funding, how you guys want to manage that in the future by policy or not. And then Lindsay will talk about some debt policy changes. Those were high-level discussions. And then tomorrow, we will dip back into the weeds again. And Sheena will talk about compensation and benefits and how that looks, how that shapes up going forward. And then we will get way into the weeds. And we will have Rusty along with Chief Lannerman and Alora talk about community paramedicine and 911 accreditation. And then we will have Tim talk briefly about homelessness. And what we need to hear from commissioners is if there, but if any budget impact you see regarding that. And then we'll go back to 30,000 feet to end the day when we just have a basic discussion. And we've talked with each of you about core service and mission and priorities for B O C C going forward. And that is your time to basically talk at staff. So with that, I want to come back to compensation. And we'll talk about this a little bit again tomorrow. But in 2024, the commission approved $29.1 million of salary increase. That includes the $5.4 million for sheriff and the proposed .3 million for 911 that we will present at your meeting next week. It does not include discussions and analysis that we are currently doing with the district attorney's office and other professional jobs within the county. It does not include any of that. In the last three years, 2022, 2023, and 2024, the commission has approved $52.9 million in additional salary. So when you hear Lauren and you'll hear Lindsay talk about budget imbalance, I think this is the impetus of that imbalance. We're doing things in the compensation world that has not been done for generations in the county and is beginning to show up in these budgets, and it'll show up in our forecast.
Tom, can you clarify again? In 2024, you said 29 million in salary. That is incremental salary. Can you clarify that?
That is total salary increase, and it will be forever salary.
So that 29 million is an increase, an incremental increase, number 24?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Lauren, I've now set the morbid stage for you to take over and talk about our forecast.
Thank you. Well, good morning. First, I just want to thank the budget team, Carly Sanchez, Lee McCray, Dustin Sigler, and Paul Leaker. We start a brand-new forecast every year, and we're getting close to 80,000 cells of data that they have to go through and review, and it's a tremendous amount of work. And I'm very thankful to be part of such a great team. Also, you can see this beautiful new budget design, this template that Robin made for us. I just want to thank her as well for her work. So as a reminder, the forecast is a planning tool. It projects our actual expenditures and revenues, and it's what we think is really going to happen versus the budget, which is the maximum spending limit in a given fund for one year. For example, our 2023 revised budget was $646.4 million, but our actual expenses were only $487.4 million. Yes. So our revised budget for '23 was $646.4 million, but our actual expenses were only $487.4 million. So we had $159 million of unspent authority. In this slide, I know you see this one every year, but it really illustrates the importance of the forecast. So in February of 2011, this is what commissioners saw. We were planning to fall below our minimum balance requirements, and we thought we would be insolvent within about five years. The warning that the forecast gave allowed the commission to take action and proactively address the situation, and that's why we take the forecast so seriously. So as we get into what our current forecast looked like, I just want to mention that what we're going to talk about today is not a recommendation. This is only what it looks like right now. We have done nothing to try to fix it. There's still a lot of unknowns. Through the development process, we'll find out what your priorities are and what the needs of the organization are in order to craft the recommended budget. And that's what you'll see in July. So for what we actually have included in the forecast, we do plan for all current services. We have the current adopted CIP included, and in 2029, we have a $3 million placeholder. We have $15.4 million included for technology review board projects throughout all years of the forecast. We have included a stable mill levy rate of 28.988 mils in all years, and that matches our final 2024 rate. And we have assumed that there will be a valuation cap of 4% in 2026 and beyond. So what's not included at this time is any additional funding for new programs, unbudgeted community and economic development requests or road projects, any unanticipated technology needs, and any pending capital improvement needs and priorities. So you do have the long sheet handout. Everybody should have that there seats. And I'm going to walk through what's included in that handout. So starting with our key revenue assumptions. For assessed value, for 2024, our actual increase was 9.02%. For 2025, we have a 4.5% increase included, and then 4% in those outer years. And thank you to Mark Clark and Ryan Teewell for their help on our 2025 estimates. For sales and use taxes, we have begun to go back to more normal rates. In 2021, we had a 12.01% increase, and in 2022, we had a 10.4% increase. But in 2023, we only had a 2.52% increase. And so we believe that's going to be our more normal level going forward. For motor vehicle taxes and charges for services, those will remain around normal levels of growth throughout the forecast. For our gaming revenues, we expect a decrease in 2025 when the current three-year term with Crosswind Casino ends. And then for investment income, we do expect to see slight growth this year and in 2025. And then in those outer years, we believe that's going to start coming down. We know that rates are going to start to come down later this year. And we do have some short-term investments that are going to help keep those levels up this year and next year. But in those outer years, we won't go back to the levels we used to have. We're still going to be higher. They will start decreasing.
Quick question. So when I see that says minus 25% four years in a row, is that, does that mean it's 25% on top of 25%, or is that just flat, basically?
It's a 25% decrease each year on top of what we decreased the year before. Yes.
So it's compounding, basically negatively?
Yes.
Wow. All right, thanks. I'm with you. Okay. And is that why all these charts are set up so everything is cumulative? That's the best way to say it. It's accumulating, not just a...
Yeah, it's going to show you the change from the year before.
Okay.
Our percent changes.
That helps very much. Thank you so much.
Lauren, why did you say again, the gaming revenue goes to zero? Why did you say that?
This is our last year. We have a signed agreement with Crosswind Casinos. And so after this year, we think it'll go back to that flat level that we've had before. It just, yes, it won't increase. It'll be flat after that comes out.
Should we talk to Crosswind again?
I believe people have been in negotiations with Crosswinds, but we don't know yet what that's going to look like.
Okay.
And the agreement right now is, it kind of looks like an evergreen agreement. But Rusty did say he would reach out and speak with those folks and confirm that it is their intent to allow us to continue to do that. But until we know that for sure, we don't want to count on it in the forecast.
Well, I'll get with Rusty. I'll get with Rusty. Okay, thank you.
So if we look at our expenditure assumptions, currently, we have 5% paypools in 2025 and 2026, and then 4% paypools in our outer years. That 5% paypool adds $6.2 million in recurring costs each year, and a 4% paypool adds $5 million in recurring costs each year. For health insurance, we have increases of 5% in the outer years. Of course, we know that our Keters and KPNF rates are going to increase as well as our utilities. If you look at fleet charges, that fluctuation there is due to fuel charge estimates. Lindsay is actually going to talk about vehicle acquisition next. And you'll hear about looking at our whole process, and that could include how we do our fleet charges. Next, we have our admin charges. There is a very large fluctuation, and that is because we had those three tax funds, Calm Care, EMS, and Noxious Weeds. They got consolidated into the general fund in 2022. And so last year, they paid back their final admin charges. If you look at software and hardware maintenance, this is always where we're going to see the largest fluctuations across the forecast. And that's solely due to our TRB projects that we have currently included in each year. External agency funding, that big change you see is because in 2023, the $2 million that was given to Child Advocacy Center. And then we do list out amounts by year for TRB, debt service, and our cash-funded CIP projects. The last thing there you can see is that we finished our five-year radio replacement plan in 2023. So looking at our forecasted results, the first thing everyone will notice is that there is a lot of red on this slide. The majority of this red is not a bad thing. If you look at our other county property tax funds, what we're doing is we are strategically drawing those down across the life of the forecast. We're trying to meet a goal fund balance in those funds. Of course, if we look at the general fund, this is where we're going to see the most changes from what you saw in your adopted budget. Our surpluses in 2024 and 2025 have decreased significantly, and we're now seeing our deficit starting in 2026 instead of 2028.
Lauren, could you clarify a comment? You said these are representative of trying to reach a goal fund balance. So this is not representative of surplus deficit? This is representative of reaching a goal fund balance?
So this is actually our surplus and deficit. On the next slide, you'll see what our ending fund balances are. So you can see, for example, in aging, that's how much it's going down each year because we're trying to reach their goal fund balance of $200,000 by the end of our forecast life.
Thank you.
So for our surpluses and deficits in the general fund, the big change we have is that compensation from the sheriff's office in January. That adds $5.4 million in recurring costs each year. And the other big factor is the updated investment income. As Lindsay has said, we consider this one-time revenue. And if we took out the investment income we are getting this year and next year, we would actually see those structural imbalances starting this year. And here are the forecasted ending fund balances. For our general fund, you can see that we're going to stay well above the 20% of budgeted general fund expenditures that we have to have for our fund balance policy. And then those other ones, you can see how we are drawing them down, and it shows you what goal we're trying to reach by the end of the forecast. We also have the mill levy rate by fund. And again, we kept it flat at 28.988 mils to match what we had as our final rate for 2024. So for our next steps, tomorrow morning, base budgets will be released to our departments. They have until late March to do their base budget submission and also any additional funding requests they might have. County manager reviews are in late April, and commission hearings are in early May. July 10th is scheduled as the manager's recommended budget presentation and our last update. We have two public hearings scheduled currently. Our first one is Wednesday, July 31st at 6:00 p.m., and the second is Wednesday, August 21st at 9:00 a.m. And we do have budget adoption and the revenue neutral rate resolution adoption also scheduled for Wednesday, August 21st. And finally, we do have some additional considerations for 2025, and Lindsay is going to come talk about ARPA.
Can everybody hear me okay? All right. So commissioners, just so you know, we don't yet include anything in the forecast related to the ARPA considerations that we talked as a part of your spend plan that you approved a week or so ago. So I want to remind you of what those are because those are backdrops to this conversation, and it will certainly have an impact on this forecast. So first of all, what we want to talk about is revenue replacement. So we complete, as a part of our quarterly report to the feds for ARPA, a calculation sheet that's in that report that you receive each quarter that shows how much estimated revenue replacement we are permitted to do. This is based on a calculation that the federal government has put out that computes the amount of lost revenue to every municipality that received ARPA funds. And so this is an application that's applied uniformly to every government. Do I believe it's accurate? No. But at the same time, it's what we're permitted to do. And so let me tell you that number, then we'll talk about what we can do with it and how that could have an impact on the forecast. And then we'll shift to continued costs that have been requested. So in total, through 2022, because those are the only audited financials we have at this point. Obviously, we're in the middle of 2023 audit. This number is staggering to me. They estimate that we have lost $91.2 million for just, excuse me, just 2020, 2021, and 2022. In fact, as a part of that overall number, they say in '22 alone, we lost $46.5 million based on the lack of growth in overall revenues from year to year. So again, do I really think that but for COVID, we would have had $46.5 million flowing into our coffers? Absolutely not. But it does introduce some flexibility. So just as a reminder, under ARPA, one of the things we have not talked about in a public conversation yet is the concept of revenue replacement. That is a permissible use. And what it says is, we can use those funds for any traditional government service, but we still have to use federal procurement to do that. So when we think about federal procurement and all the hoops and things we have to jump through, anything we can do to avoid that if we want to use any of our excess funds that are remaining at the end of the spend plan for revenue replacement, we'd really like to avoid something that we have to buy. We know that there's a lot of time that's built into it, and we could risk losing funds because of the timing associated with competitive procurement. So what we would want to consider, our recommendation to the commission would be to look at using it for the most fundamental salaries you can think of, which would be public safety, probably sheriff, detention, and patrol. So what we would be able to do is look at each quarter as we come up and look at your spend plan, potentially reimbursing the general fund for those costs incurred in that quarter for, let's say, detention and patrol. There's no federal procurement associated with our payroll. We're doing our normal policies and procedures when we're paying those folks. And so that would allow us to infuse cash into the general fund. Right now, I'll remind you that your CIP contingency within ARPA is up around $17 million. We're going to be working closely with the departments that have projects in ARPA to get very precise estimates so that we can understand what those dollars are. And when I say that could impact your forecast, what I want you to maybe think about is because this is one-time revenue, just like investment income, are there opportunities for us to use those funds to buy down our debt service? So you can see on Lauren's long sheet that there's quite a bit up to $16 or $17 million in annual debt service. If we can use these dollars to offset some of those costs, we could reduce that debt service thereby freeing up some cash in your general fund. Or we could use it to invest in the equipment reserve. We know that there are, you know, equipment, the elections equipment fleet is going to have to be replaced within a few years. So there are lots of things that we can think of through this process over the next several months where we can either look at it from reducing overall expenses long-term in our property tax funds or investing in those one-time projects to alleviate some of the burden on the funds long-term. So I wanted to put that out there to you at this budget retreat because even though it's not a part of the forecast yet, it's going to have to be part of our discussion. But we have to keep in mind that they're two separate things. And so that's why Lauren hasn't yet included it in her forecast because we need direction from you all. We're not just going to make those assumptions. The second part I wanted to talk about here for the ARPA Continued Funding Asks is you heard during your briefings on ARPA that there are a number of position asks that are likely going to come before you through this upcoming 2025 budget process. We have north of 30 position requests that we are anticipating based on feedback from departments at a minimum additional cost of at least $2 million to your general fund. And so that is also not included in this forecast yet because departments need to make those requests of you, and you need to let us know some directions. So between today and tomorrow, you're going to hear a lot about competing needs and things that are happening. We want you to have all of this as a backdrop. And I also want departments to hear this because you can see the struggles we're going to be facing in the next couple of years. And one of the things I think we're going to have to really talk about is, what do we value more? Do we value compensation more, or do we value, you know, added positions or added resource? So as you're considering your budget requests when you get your budget targets tomorrow, just kind of have that in the back of your mind. So that's all I wanted to share. I'm happy to answer questions. Otherwise, this is really more just a starting point and giving you an information dump. Any questions for me?
Any questions? That's really good, Lindsay. Thank you.
Or for Lauren, I'll throw her under the bus. Okay. We'll move to the next topic if that's okay.
Everyone good here? Tom, you good?
Lindsay, where'd you get your jacket?
Um, I got it multiple years ago.
Thanks.
Okay, can we, I guess, is there a way to take down the PowerPoint? Because I'm not speaking off of the PowerPoint. I'm boring. Thank you. Okay, you ready for vehicle acquisition? I feel like we all need to stand up and do a power pose or something to wake up. Brent just reminded me about those yesterday. So like, everybody stretch or do something to wake up. Good job, Sheena. Thank you for participating. Okay. Well, Commissioner Howell's trying, but limited. Okay, so vehicle acquisition. This is something that many of you care a lot about and something that some of you care absolutely nothing about. So we're going to talk quick. But we did promise to bring this conversation back. So you might remember a staff meeting several, I don't know, a couple of months ago. EMS came and talked to you about some of the challenges they're experiencing with getting ambulances in. And I know that Beau has talked many times with Joe Thomas about challenges in getting especially some of our larger equipment delivered in a reasonable time. And so one of the challenges that we have had is figuring out how to handle that in a budget. Because we have budgets, the Fleet Management Fund is an example of a certified budget where once you all approve it, it's set. We have to go back and entirely re-adopt the budget if we want to change it. And Lauren alluded to fleet charges earlier. Right now, departments are set up to pay the amount of charges that they need over the expected lifetime of a vehicle in order to then buy that vehicle at the end of that lifespan. It's going to take you four years, two to four years, to get your equipment after you order it. We don't have enough cash in the bank to pay for it at the time we have to put it in order, right? Because of the way that our system works. I think if you've ever read the monthly report, I hope at least one of you has, maybe just opened one of them. We talk about shopping carts and how that works in our system. Because when we put in a shopping cart, it equals a purchase order. And that purchase order then equals a commitment of funds. So one of the things we love to talk to you about, right, is budgetary basis versus generally accepted accounting principle basis. So Lauren talks on a budgetary basis. How much cash are we bringing in? How much cash are we putting out? That's budgetary basis. On a GAAP basis, they want to know, what does your balance sheet look like? What do you have in your inventories? What do you have that's restricted by law, blah, blah, blah? So you can't necessarily spend that. So we have to talk about two different sets of books. On a budgetary basis, the second we put in that order, because we encumber those funds and create a shopping cart, we have considered as having spent that money on a budgetary basis, and it eats up budget authority for that year. Well, if it turns out that we enter that shopping cart and it's going to take us three years to get that vehicle, the shopping cart rolls forward in our system and eats up budget authority in every single new budget for three years until that item gets here. On a GAAP basis, it doesn't actually count until you get the vehicle. That's when the expense occurs. And so it creates a lot of logistical challenges in an operating budget when you have these very expensive pieces of equipment that you don't necessarily know when they're going to get here, and they just keep rolling forward. So we thought we had a great plan. We were just going to do a master lease and buy off a lease. And then we remembered, hey, there's this new Gatsby rule that came out last year that caused us to have such a late audit in terms of delivery, and we can't really do that. It's going to really mess with our financials. So we talked to our auditor and asked for, you know, we can't possibly be the only governmental entity that is experiencing this challenge. So what are other people doing? So they sent us back some ideas from multiple different governments. And we have taken parts and pieces of those based on how our system works to put forward a process that we would like to propose to you that would start with the 2025 budget. And this is not anything you all have to approve, this document that's been passed out. This is something that we maintain within finance. But the idea would be that when Beau is aware of these vehicles that are going to come in, and it's three to four years, that he would basically tell us it's going to be three to four years. Well, then it becomes a finance problem. And we have some procedure and process here that we want to do. Basically, we want to grow Beau's budget. We want to grow his vehicle acquisition fleet budget by an estimated amount of money based on what we're hearing from departments, whether it's EMS with their ambulances, if it's Lynn's Group with their dump trucks, if it's anything that's obviously not fire-related because fire has their own fleet budget. And we would basically work with Beau to understand how much he's going to need on these longer vehicles that will take years to get here, and we will bulk up his budget to cover that. And we would like to include some extra cash in his budget through a general fund transfer later this year so that we continue to let departments pay their fleet charges on schedule so that we're not all of a sudden asking Beau's fund to pay for all of this without having the set aside dollars. And so that's something that we would like to do through this process. And then our purchasing director would need to flag those at the time we're ordering them, make sure that Beau is aware of this and how that's going to sit in his budget, and also make sure that accounting can account for that and understand because it's going to play, it's going to wreak some havoc on our system. Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. Have you quantified how many it's you're talking about?
No, no, not at all. Because this is some, literally, we just got this back from the auditors like mid-last week. And so I have not even reached out to Beau to have this conversation. What we needed to know is if this is something you would be interested in allowing us to pursue over the next few months and putting in a budget.
And Beau agrees?
I haven't talked to him yet. But I think as long as we make sure he has money in the budget for him to do what he needs to do, this is going to be a much better situation than making him wait for a couple of years.
So let me ask another question. We just finished the ARPA replacement. Is this a viable option to use some of those funds in the replacement? Okay.
What we would have to do is, again, we don't want to use ARPA What we would have to do is, again, we don't want to use ARPA to buy the vehicles, right? Because of the timelines.
I get it.
But yes, once the cash comes into the general fund at the end of this year, if we want to access those reserves that we have, the rainy day reserve, which has very specific and limited uses. This would be a permissible use of that rainy day reserve and that would be an option for us to consider for the 2025 budget. But what Beau needs to know, we need to give him permission to work with departments to understand what these needs are and kind of start thinking about his budget in a different way. So I wanted to get your endorsement before we started doing anything.
Okay. Thoughts?
But is this the best place to use ARPA replacement or is there other places that would be more beneficial to the county?
That is an excellent policy question, Commissioner Dennis. And I am certain that over the next couple of days, you're going to hear lots of compelling needs where you might believe that revenue replacement could be used for other things. But I would tell you that we have built up a surplus. We do anticipate having additional investment income. And so while ARPA revenue replacement may not be the option, there may be some surplus general fund cash that you might otherwise think could be used.
The, the authority to do this, is this a consequence of the legislation we passed a year or two ago?
No.
Be able to do it? No, this has nothing to do with that.
Actually, we're not even, so, so one, this is a good question because one of the staples that we've done over the last few years when this has happened is we shifted cash out of the fleet fund into equipment reserve. And then we've used equipment reserve to make these purchases. The problem with that is, and this again comes back to the GAAP basis stuff, um, that becomes an asset. And when we move it as an asset from the fleet fund to the equipment reserve fund, we're no longer able to account for our assets appropriately. And so we had talked about in our, um, internal department discussion, if it made sense to just move all of this to the equipment reserve because it's an unbudgeted fund anyway. And what we realized in talking with our accountant who handles assets is that creates significant new work for her and it's very risky. And so we thought that it was much better to just maintain it within the fleet management fund so that neither Beau nor purchasing nor accounting have to jump through a bunch of hoops to try and track our asset appropriately.
So once the vehicle's actually received, this all gets straightened back out again? So that fund is then re-
Right. That's paid, the budget authority would still be there because it's being used in that year, but we would intend to keep a flat amount for this kind of, almost like a contingency that we intend to use every year based on what we learned through a budget process. And I'm really hoping honestly that someday the supply chain disruption gets fixed and this becomes less of an issue, but we know that's not anytime soon.
So if we, if we go down this path, we're going to see a chunk of money come off our ending balance essentially set aside for this-
Yes.
Refunding, if you will, of ordering these fleet vehicles.
But what I would like to do is do that in 2024 so that you don't have to have that impact your 2025 budget or beyond. I would like to use your investment income or the ARPA replacement funds that you get this year as a-
And about how much money are you, how much money are we suggesting we would start this with?
I, I don't, uh, right now, my ballpark, and please don't hold me to this, because this is a ballpark, is seven million just based on a quick review of the expenses we've had that have carried forward over a couple of years.
Do you anticipate adding to that and then, and a couple of years after that? So it ends up being a higher number than-
Every year it would be seven million. So remember that since this is a certified fund, the budget authority expires at the end of the year and we have to give him a brand new budget to start with. So I would propose doing a one-time big spike in 2025 to give him that extra budget authority and then leaving it flat until we, unless there's something major that comes along where we would need to increase it. Um, but otherwise just kind of play it by ear, year to year to see what's on the horizon and what the delivery times are and make adjustments as necessary.
I, I thought there, the, some of these, I assume we're talking like ambulances and fire trucks primarily. Is there anything else besides that?
Dump trucks. Um, actually, we've seen it even with, uh, the ordering times on sheriff, basic fleet vehicles. So I mean, literally it can be anything.
Um, I was under the impression for fire trucks and ambulances that when you order them, you're not, you're paying like a down payment, so to speak, to assert the order, but you're not paying the bulk of the order on the front end. You're paying a lot of that on the, on the receiving side of that.
So for, for fire trucks, because that's done through the fire district and not through the fleet management fund, we've handled that through a vehicle lease-to-buy deal where we don't even have to encumber those funds in the system because we know we're going to make those payments and installments over seven or eight years. On the ambulance side, the second we put it in order on a budgetary basis, the, the whole cost of that ambulance becomes a realized cost.
Will we continue doing the lease, uh, purchasing plan that was we currently use in the fire district? We would continue doing that?
That would be my plan, yes, but they do have, uh, robust balance in their, um, special equipment fund. And so at some point they may come to you with a request to potentially access those funds in lieu of doing new debt. But that will be a conversation that they will have with you.
Savings overall, that might be worth talking about.
Right. There could be, yes. But we also don't want to leave them in any kind of, uh, vulnerable position since we know the county general fund can't bail them out.
Sir, is there an ask today to get consensus on establishing budget authority? Is that what you're asking?
It's really more just to allow us to proceed with this approach. And then we would work with Beau because he's going to have to work with departments to understand-
We'll figure out the mechanism to fund that.
Yes.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure that changing, this is going to be a significant change in how we approach vehicle replacement. So we wanted to float the idea in front of you. And we're not necessarily saying it's the perfect idea or the perfect approach, but this would at least allow us to start down a path of talking about this and seeing if it's how it would work, if you all are open to it.
I would be in favor and everybody else, please provide your insight. I'd be in favor of continuing in that conversation, that a way we can arrive at a-
I appreciate it. That's all I needed.
Estimation. Anybody disagree? Pete, you good? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
That's helpful. Thanks. Thanks, Beau.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, um, I am here today to talk about, uh, CIP funding with public, specifically Public Works CIP. I'm just going to give you a brief overview of, uh, the Public Works and how, what our funding status is. This right here, just a quick synopsis of where our, uh, CIP funding comes from. I think everyone understands, but for those that don't, uh, most of our CIP funding comes from a half-cent sales tax that we've had for, uh, thankfully had for many years. Um, it's dedicated funding that cannot be used for anything else. Something that a lot of people may not know, including some of you, is that included, uh, is some of the expenses that are included in that is not just projects, uh, but we also have ten full-time equipment positions that are paid out of this funding source. We have materials for our traffic operations that are paid out of this source of, of funds. And we also have materials for our roadway maintenance that comes out of this, out of this funding source. These are all allowed, um, expenditures, uh, but they do pull directly away from use on our projects. I'm sorry? Uh, we've, uh, the positions have been there the last not quite fifteen years. Uh, they were moved over there as a, uh, budgetary, uh, move to take them off property tax when we were going through some, some tough times. Um, and allow, we were at a point where we were being asked to cut positions. We had already given up all of our positions back in 2003. We had nothing else to give up, so we moved their funding source over, uh, to clear out the budget shortfall that we needed to, uh, uh, our department was asked to give up.
But I, so I assume that the third and fourth bullet, the materials, has been ongoing from the start?
Uh, not quite the start. Uh, the materials for traffic operations was moved over, uh, less than ten years ago. Um, and the materials has been there, uh, going on less than twenty years, I believe. So-
Okay. Thank you.
And when everything started off, it was just projects, but over time, as we've had challenges, things have been moved from property tax to sales tax.
Lynn, you might get to this, but do you know what the total fiscal note is of those ten FTE positions that are paid out of this funding source?
Yes. So, uh, that's my next slide, but our, our total coming out right now, um, as of last year, our salary for those ten positions, salary and overhead was just over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So, uh, just a quick look going back to 2019. Uh, costs are going up. I've mentioned this the last couple of years to you. Um, we have, uh, each of our, it's not a, uh, any type of a surprise. Our projects, uh, costs have gone up, materials have gone up. We've talked about it. The one thing we didn't know was where was it going to settle out at? Were we actually going to see any kind of a decrease? Uh, thus far, we have not seen any type of decrease. When this first started with COVID and supply chain issues, I really did think we were looking at, you know, just a temporary high. We would never get back down to pre-COVID levels, but it would settle down a little bit. If that has going, if that is going to happen, we have not seen that in the heavy construction industry yet. Um, as you can see, even going into 2023, we're seeing increases across the board. In fact, 2023 saw a pretty good increase, uh, in those costs. Um, and that is, uh, a lot of, according to our partners, uh, in the, uh, our, um, contractors that we work with, a lot of it is, is really just dealt with salaries. I also want to point out that, uh, along with just giving an overview of just how each of our, uh, this is what our pavement preservation costs are coming out per lane mile. Uh, so if you look at a two-lane road, double those numbers to do a one mile of a two-lane road, uh, we look at everything as, as a lane mile. But I also want to note that it costs us about fifteen thousand dollars per year per paved mile on our highway system, just to keep them up and keep them going.
Say that number again, Lynn?
I'm sorry?
Say that number again.
We, uh, it costs almost fifteen thousand dollars per year per paved mile of road. So right now we have about eight hundred and sixty-five, uh, I think it's eight hundred and sixty-five miles of, uh, or excuse me, eight hundred, uh, five hundred and sixty-five miles of paved roads. So we're spending almost eight and a half million dollars a year just on maintaining paved roads. Uh, one of the reasons why we've had this discussion many, many times, we're always asked about, you know, hey, just go ahead and pave this mile, go pave this mile. I have a gravel road, just pave it, fix your problems. Well, it adds considerably to our bottom line. It, it, it costs us a lot more to maintain those miles. Everyone thinks that we pave it, we forget about it, we come back in ten years and, and do something to it and add a few dollars to it. It's actually not the cost. It, it's quite expensive. Um, so we do try to, uh, balance, you know, those miles we're giving up with annexation versus those miles we're adding to our system. So, uh, looking back a little bit on our funding, just to give you an idea, uh, this right here, um, ended up not being quite the dynamic, uh, matrix I was hoping to show just because you need to have a, a good understanding of, uh, CIP carryovers to kind of see the money and why we had, uh, increases and decreases in a big year. But I did want to point out more than anything else here that the last two years, we have not met our strategic goals for road and bridge maintenance. Uh, we're not expecting that, right now, we're not expecting to meet them for 2024 either. Uh, we simply can't let enough projects and, and have enough miles on our roads to be able to hit our budget. Our budget for our preventive maintenance has increased from nine million dollars a year back in 2021. I think this year we're up to eleven million dollars a year and we're still not hitting our, our goals.
Remind, remind us, what, what's the maintenance, road maintenance goals? What is the goals? Touch everyone.
So our goals are to, uh, we want to go ahead right now and we want to service, replace and/or service about, uh, I believe it is thirty-five thousand square feet of our bridge deck per year. And we want to, uh, on our roads, we want to touch, what we call touch, we want to maintain, um, at least, uh, twenty percent, or sixteen and a half percent of our roads, yeah, of our paved road, um, each year. We're getting anywhere in, we're getting fifteen to sixteen percent right now. So we're not missing our goals by a lot, but we're not quite getting them with the, the funding that we currently have. The one thing I will point out here is you can get, this is where you can see the salary and overhead costs per year along with the cost of materials. So you can see that we're pushing two billion dollars a year that's coming out of our CIP, uh, for not, for other than projects. So what's next? Well, the biggest thing I want to tell you is I'm here today. I know a lot of things we're talking about is for 2025. I'm not here to talk about 2025. I'm giving you advanced notice that we really got something on the horizon coming up. I'm not going to come to you the year before and say that we need to change everything we're doing and we need to change our funding source for our CIP. I think we're good. One of the things that's going to greatly help us out is we are finishing up our tour of twenty cities of the county and we've been talking to all of them about annexations of roads that are overdue. Uh, my goal is to get fifteen miles of roads off of our network this year that will go over to the cities. That right there is going to be a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar savings that we'll get each year and every year going forward. Um, we've also talked to a few cities about not only what they could take now, but processes for them to take them in a more timely manner going forward with development and annexations that happen in the, in their cities. Um, and those conversations, for the most part, have gone very, very well, um, better than I could have, uh, expected. Um, so, uh, that is going to help us. And that's what's going to help us also kind of push this, you know, becoming an imminent need. It's, it's, it's kind of pushing that out. I say we got about probably five years before somebody, if it's not me, is here telling us that we need to find more funding.
Are you getting any pushback from any of the cities on transfer on the road, uh, maintenance to them when they're really ones that are responsible for it?
Yes. That, and that's, um, it's something we, this is our third meeting over the last fifteen, uh, actually now eighteen years. Uh, we try to get with them every five to six years. COVID got in the middle of that. Uh, uh, my predecessor, David Spears, had started this, um, and then Jim Weber and myself had followed up. And, uh, I, I get, I mean, I get it. There's only one city out there that's actively, as they grow, annexing cities as they go. Um, they're all not going to take on that liability until they have to, until we ask them to. Um, so we do, as part of the development process, the start of the platting process, we have those conversations. Usually we're shot down at that point. Um, when we have these sit downs like this every five years, we get a little more attention and they're a little more worthwhile. Um, some of the smaller cities, it's just a matter of really, uh, extending their connecting links, which still leaves the road on our network, but it does relieve us of anything off the side of the roads, which again, that, that's a maintenance help to us. It's a cost as well as a resource hog that, uh, that we are able to free up. Um, I will mention, I know I'm not making any friends here. It's been on the screen in front of you as I've been talking the last couple of minutes. Um, I'm, I know I'm, I'm going to get, be targeted for this one, but I'm just going to bring up the obvious stuff that no one wants to hear. Um, the first of all is, you know, what I'd like to see and something that I advocated for with my predecessor, the last couple of moves we made was let's get the positions, the FTEs, off sales tax, back on the property tax. I know that's a big ask. I do. And I'm not saying it needs to be done at once, but it is something to consider. Something else to consider is getting those material costs back off of, uh, sales tax on the property tax. Um, again, big ask. And probably the last thing you, any, I know no one wants to hear about, but it's something that's going to come up in the future, is looking at more than just a half-cent sales tax. Um, and I, and I bring this up, you, I thought about not even mentioning this, but I think we're going to be here, whether or not it's for the road portion or not, because if we're going to have any impact on stormwater improvements, it's going to come with a dedicated funding source. There's no municipality out there that I know of that's making a serious impact on stormwater problems without having a dedicated funding source. Whether we're talking about Lenexa up north, down in Texas, those municipalities all have a dedicated funding source. Potentially, again, not in the next couple of years, but in the future, we're looking at a sales tax, uh, uh, question that could be posed that would address both road, bridge and drainage, um, that we could potentially look at. So that's the only reason why it's up there. I wanted to take just a few minutes, uh, to bring this in front of you now. Again, not a 2025, 2026 issue. Um, I think what we're doing with the, uh, reduction of, um, our roads that we're going to have on our highway system that we're doing now is going to help us. Um, but it is something that we're going to have to have with you or your successors here probably in the next five years. And, uh, probably in the next five years, and I wanted to get it on everyone's radar.
But I like having the things being paid for out of the sales tax, because that reduces the amount of money that we're putting in for property tax. So I hate to say that we're going to start using property tax to do all these things.
Understood.
Because that then puts more pressure on our property tax. So I don't, I don't know that I really like moving FTEs and material costs back to property tax rather than using the sales tax.
Totally understood. There's pros and cons with every side of it.
Question, is the, is the movement of these FTEs, is that baked in your forecast, Lorian? That is in the forecast?
You've baked these into moving them to property tax? Okay.
They're in the forecast, in the first one.
Okay.
So the answer was yes? It was as you're saying no?
So they are in the forecast where they currently are. We wouldn't plan on moving them without some kind of direction from the budget team or from you all.
Okay, so the sales tax revenue forecast still includes these people as part of that in your expense side? Okay.
And the material?
If everything currently, all of this is budgeted in their sales tax CIP fund, we haven't planned on moving anything. It's staying there for the life of the forecast unless there was some direction to change that.
Well, I see he's making the recommendation. What is the reason behind that recommendation? Is there some reason we would move that out, other than the fact that we don't have as much sales tax funds?
I make that recommendation, as, the public works make that recommendation just as a way of alleviating the pressure we currently have on the capital improvement program. That's simply as, understanding that that brings on a whole nother issue with the property tax side of things. But we bring it up just as an alleviation of the CIP portion of it.
And if I can jump in and piggyback off that, yes, these are Lynn's recommendations, but I think this brings a bigger conversation to mind, which is, if we're not meeting the goals, if Lynn's current funding is not enabling him to reach his current goals, then how do we fix it? This is one way to approach the fix, which is moving things out of that fund and freeing up money to do those other projects, or we revise our expectations, or we find a different funding source. And so that's another thing, and I know Commissioner House, I'm not even going to look at him when I say this, debt funding is always an option to look at if we wanted to look at an alternative.
I was going to eat the microphone. No, I am changing topics slightly. We have a little more than 100 miles of cold mixed road.
I'm sorry?
More, a little bit more than 100 miles of cold mix.
Correct, I think we are at 129.
129? And how many of those do you want to replace in a year?
We are replacing, it's not a dedicated amount each year, but right now, in the current CIP, I believe we have three of those miles that are going to be converted.
How many?
Three, I believe three miles are being converted over in the current CIP.
Okay, and the return on the investment? So if you go to, from a cold mix to a hot mix replacement road, if you don't do that, and you maintain the cold mix road by doing something to it every roughly six or so years, it's less money per, it's less money on the short term, and there's a return on the investment potentially in the long and the, in the out years, you know, way out. What's, how many years out is that break-even point?
It's, we would have to run a new analysis to run on new funding and new expenditure levels. When we did that before the break-even, I ran those numbers back in 2016, and back then, break-even point was, no, I don't even want to hazard a guess. I need to look at those numbers again. But they, it did not, it was, the return on investment was far enough out that it didn't make sense.
I'm going to guess somewhere around 50 to 60 years.
It was, I think it was just under 50 years, but I want to, I need to go back and look at those numbers.
So I guess I'd like to have a conversation about whether that's our right strategy for Sedgwick County. I don't know if I want to do something this year where we don't break even for 50 to 60 years on it. I don't think, I'm not sure that's the right policy.
Now, I will, I also, it's important to also note that with our cold mixed roads, that we're putting hot mixed treatments on right now just to get us through. We are doing a major improvement to it every six years or so, what we consider a major improvement. However, our yards are going out every year or every other year, and fixing potholes and fixing portions of that in between. So those cold mixed roads are a huge drag on our resources that we're trying to alleviate each year and then, and get to them as we can.
And part of that calculation is also there's maintenance required on a hot mixed road. So in that 50 or 60 years, you're going to have to do a fair amount of significant maintenance on that road during that same time. So it's a more complex calculation, simply, I get that. One of my other questions is, you know, our internal standard for what we do for roads, you know, I'm trusting Public Works to make the right decisions and do what you think is best. I guess I'm just curious, how does that compare to other jurisdictions? Does the, does the commission have a role to play in picking, if you will, a standard that we're more comfortable with? I mean, maybe these roads are, you know, higher quality than what we would want to pay for on the front end. I think there's a lot of decisions that could be made about how to build a road. And again, I know this is your world, not mine, but I guess I just say, if you're making all of the decisions, if I was in your shoes, I'd want to build the very best road I could build. And it may be more money today, but down the road, theoretically, it'll pay for itself. I'm just curious, in a budget challenge, if that's the right strategy? And we might, we might be willing to make some reasonable concessions on the front end to manage our budget better. And I would just like to know, who is actually behind you that would actually say there are some decisions to be made, and we would like to have a discussion about what's the right strategy for Sedgwick County?
We can definitely have those discussions. You know, I'll, same thing as my predecessors have told you guys for many, many years, you know, you build roads from the bottom up. And when you don't start at the bottom, you're just asking for problems, and it's going to cost you more money in the end. You don't need to build the Taj Mahal from the beginning on a road. We feel right now, we have a nice, reasonable start to our roads when we build them. What we are trying to do, and the way we are trying to make improvements, and something we're working on with a new, this year, with a new pilot program, is to work on how we are maintaining those roads and making those decisions on maintaining those roads and a better. In the past, it has always been trying to touch these roads in a certain amount of time. Well, every road receives a different amount of traffic. Every road receives different types of water and every, and drainage issues. So, and that affects how they perform. What we'd rather do is go, and we've been moving that way for a couple of years now, is to complete that move and have us address roads on an as-needed basis. So that means we may touch a road in five years, another road we may not touch for 10 years. It's all going to be on an as-needed basis.
So to finish up before we, because lunch is here, three things. One, would you be able to just email me separately some of the differences between materials? I'm not up to speed on what exactly it is we use and some of that stuff to Commissioner House's point. Just email me separately.
Yeah.
The second point is, have we ever had, or are we actively having, and Tom, you might want to be on this one, any active with the cities in our county, their annexation strategies long-term? I've talked to two cities that have some rather aggressive annexation strategies that are going to impact our future maintenance. I know we're talking connecting links now, which thank you so much for initiating that. But I, there are some cities that have some pretty aggressive annexation strategies that I think we need to consider in the next five to 10 years.
Yeah, I'm going to let Lynn, I mean, that's a really good question. So with your counterpart, Gary Janson at the city, and all of the 19 other cities, everybody's struggling with streets, we all, we all know that. In Wichita City, it's very public, their challenges with their residential roads. How much, is there room for crossover? Is there room for working together? Is there room for, especially on the front end of this with materials and process, is there room for that that would be cost-effective, I guess?
We've actually already have our meeting with Gary and his replacement as city engineer, Paul Gunzelman. They actually have been very open. They, obviously, they have the largest city, they have the most roads that need to be annexed that are overdue. They have already agreed to annex, I think, almost six miles just outright this year. They have also agreed to work with us on plating, when those plats come up and they make sense for annexation. The other issue we've had with cities is they'll let us know, hey, we know this development's coming. We know that we're going to construct and do something. We have a project coming in three years while annex after the project.
Okay.
The problem with that is, we run all the permits for all the consult, all the contractors, we run all that stuff. So we, one of the other things we're engaging with the cities about is like, hey, if we know that's coming and that's going to be constructed in 2028, let's work on getting that annexed before 2028 so that you're running the permits, you're running the access.
Lynn, what about, what about sourcing milling and materials? Is there a chance that we could work closer? I mean, I imagine parks, my district, Park City, Valley Center, Mays, in Wichita, that they're individually sourcing their own materials and milling. Is there a chance we can collaborate to try to reduce some of those costs? Has that ever been considered?
We have looked at it, and we can definitely look at it again. I believe where we would, the benefit would be to them, not to us.
Okay.
We order a quantity right now that we're not going to see a better, better unit price based on quantity. They very well may, though.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Lynn?
Just a quick one, is the 16.5, is every six years, is that a standard? Is it Kansas, or is that?
No.
If you move that to seven years, would that help you achieve your goals?
Well, we've moved from five to six, and that's what I was talking about. I would like to go not to a set amount of time. I would rather go to an as-needed on, based on our review. We actually are doing a pilot program. I'll just, for 30, I know we're getting ready to eat, I'm not trying to stop anyone, but I'm excited about it. We're actually working with professional engineering consultants who has a company out there that is using cell phone cameras. We actually got a GoPro to make it a little bit better. But using video where we can actually analyze, we used to do windshield reviews of our roads. This is going to allow us to drive 55 miles an hour down our roads, look at one way, catch both roads. It analyzes, uses AI to analyze what it sees and give a grade on the Pacer system, which is what we use to grade our roads. And then, based on those grades, we make decisions on whether something needs to be done or not. Prior to the last couple of years, whether it scored high or not, that five or six years was up, we did something to it. Probably if it was doing well, we did a lighter maintenance cycle on it, something not as heavy. But if it doesn't need it, why touch it? I mean, I'm not talking about getting these roads down to the point where we got to spend a lot more money, because that has been proven time and time again throughout the industry since the 70s. The longer you let it go, the more it's going to cost to bring it up to spec. I'm talking about just, you know, making smart choices about when we're maintaining these roads. And that could be five years, or it could be 10 years.
Okay, that's good, very good. Anything else for Lynn?
No, I think we're ready for a break. It's 11:45, so let's take a break and then grab lunch and go back to seat. And then, Tanya, we'll start on the next section, right around 12 o'clock, 12:05, somewhere in there.
Thanks, Lynn.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Tanya is going to continue the CIP discussion, give you an update on CIP projects and lease information.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I am going to take, if I can, 10 minutes at the end, just to talk about legislative updates. And I have two pieces of written testimony I'd like to have you take a look at and see if you want to approve that to get to Jason and Jessica for hearings that are on Monday. So, okay, so to talk to you about CIP updates, and then at the end, I want to talk about lease information because I think you will be interested to see what we have for leases. Right now, in Project Services, we have 27 CIP projects between 2023 and 2024. I am not giving you an update on all 27 of those CIP projects. I have just included maybe about 10 or 12 of those CIP projects that I think you would be most interested to hear about. If there is one that's missing that you want to hear more information about, please feel free to ask questions, and if I don't have answers, we'll be sure to get you that information. Okay, so I categorize these under divisions. So for public safety, CIP update, I think you've heard a lot about this, probably from Lindsay, as she has given an ARPA update. That is the jail locks and camera upgrades. Right now, I would say this is under construction, 2% is complete, so it's just getting started. But our estimated date of subvention is November of 2025. That is being funded through our courthouse, courtrooms, and second and third floor DA remodel. That is another ARPA-funded project, under construction, 82% complete, and that is estimated to be substantially complete June of this year. And then the juvenile services, community-based building, that is getting ready to go out here very soon for RFP for design. If you recall, you approved design in this year, and then construction in next year. So CIP for construction will be in 2025.
That's the one that tears down the existing building and builds another building?
That's correct.
And we have, we, we voted for that already.
Correct.
We voted to move forward with that.
That's correct.
We're tearing down a building. I thought we were going to go and look at other options. Yeah. I've never agreed to tear down a building.
Is that on the juvenile?
Correct. The juvenile campus, juvenile corrections campus.
But every time that we've talked about this, I said I don't want to tear down a building. Now suddenly, we're going out for RFP and we're going to tear down a building?
Well, I think, I think the discussion that we'll have with the commission in the future is when, as this moves forward, and Steve's not here, I don't think.
No, he's not here.
The concept there is to talk about doing this right the first time, making sure that we're either demolishing or building to the point where we can get all operations onto this campus. I think that's the discussion.
Well, we were going to look at maybe some place that was close by. I don't recall us saying, go ahead and put an RFP out for tearing down a building.
What's the status, is the RFP out?
RFP is not out yet, but we're working on putting the RFP out for design.
For design?
Correct. Design was approved in 2024, and construction was approved in 2025.
But if we do that, and then we get a, and that will be for a contractor, or?
For a architectural and engineering firm.
To start.
Correct.
Then at that point, when we get that person hired, then we engage the commission, right? Then we engage the discussion of how and what this is going to look like.
Yes, we can, yes.
Well, I want us to have final say on this.
You do.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is the JDF audio system improvements. So this is for acoustical, excuse me, acoustical enhancements to JDF and GIAC. And so it's adding audio to the cameras. You will be seeing a CIP amendment come before you, and so that will be, Andrew believes that you should be seeing this here very soon in February. And so if you have any questions on that, be sure to let me know. We're also adding, I think, 15 to 20 cameras to blind spots in JDF and GIAC. The Regional Forensic Science Center DNA lab addition, I think we have talked about this with you Commissioners on several occasions. We're putting a hold on this for right now. If you recall, we were trying to obtain a parcel there, and we just can't obtain that parcel, I'll just be really honest with you. So what we're doing is, we are holding on that. We looked at two other options for this DNA lab. One option was basically to decrease the space there for the lab addition. Because we couldn't obtain that parcel, Dr. Stedman did not like that idea. The other thing we could do there was go up, basically add two floors, but that would add about a million dollars to that project. So basically, the conversation that we're having with Dr. Stedman is, can the conversation that we're having with Dr. Stedman is, can you kind of revision your space there at Regional Forensic Science Center? There is space there to the west that's owned by KU Med Center.
Correct.
Also diagonally, there is the Health Department and some parking space there that I think we could look to utilize. So, it's, it's not directly on there on her campus, but there is some space that, again, if she can kind of revision her...
Well, I appreciate you putting on hold. There are some, obviously, the Biomed campus coming, KU Med's going to be making some decisions. So,
Yep.
Instead of trying to, instead of making the wrong decision this year, I think maybe we hang tight for a second. But how, how important is this DNA lab to the operations of, I mean, this isn't important. We need to move forward on a DNA lab quickly. It is...
We got sheriff people here and DA, and I'll speak on their behalf. It's critical.
Okay.
For their operations.
Okay. So, do we need to engage KU Med now on that conversation?
We certainly can. What I can tell you is that Rusty and I and Dr. Stedman and Andrew are having a meeting here very soon to kind of start, start to talk through this space. And so, we're, we're on it, and we're trying to make sure that we engage as much as we can on this, on the space issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I want to go back to juvenile just a little bit, too, because we've talked about this a lot. As we move forward, we thought about even engaging past commission. We wanted to engage with state reps. We wanted to engage with Department of Corrections, state-level people. As we look at the design and operations of this facility, and of course, the commission has the last bite at that, but we have talked about that a lot. So, don't think that we're slipping anything ahead or moving too fast on something on this, on that juvenile campus, for sure, because we know there has to be a comprehensive look at that. And we got one shot at this, and it's significant money, and we want to make sure we do it right. So, I want to make sure that we're clear that there's going to be a lot of engagement on this, even past the commission. There'll be some state people getting some input in this, too.
Okay. Moving on to Public Services CIP updates, Community Crisis Center. You are all well aware that we just acquired the building. You just approved the architectural and engineering design. The estimated date of substantial completion, we're looking around March of 2026 for that. The Health Clinic West Central, that is currently on hold. And Chairman, you just kind of alluded to what's happening with the Biomed campus. And so, there is discussion about some of those programs moving out of KU Med Center on Ninth Street. And so, the reason that we have to make CIP on hold is because there is opportunities there for what's happening at West Central to move into KU Med Center when those programs move out. And so, we didn't want to spend money on updating the, the Health Clinic on West Central if that program has the potential to move into KU Med Center, as well as the Health Department that's there on Ninth, Ninth Street. So, that we have put on hold for now. Okay, Administration CIP updates, Administration Building. I think we've all had conversations with you on the Third and Main parcel. We are moving ahead with getting that parcel appraised, and I think we've given you all an update on the traffic study, that that was basically in line with the numbers that we had for available parking. We are also going to renegotiate the Roughen lease on the renewal terms. That expires June 30th of 2025. As you are aware, we have three one-year options, and that rate goes up to $18 per square foot. And so, I would like to just be able to go back and try to renegotiate the cost for those renewable terms. Elections Building, this is a little bit old. The purchase agreement we have on for the BOCC agenda next week, actually. So, March 24th, that date has changed. And then, as you are aware, the closing, per the purchase agreement, is for June of 2025.
Tanya, one of the things that we've got on the CIP is a storage building.
That's correct.
Can we drop that because of the Elections Building? Because we can use those two outbuildings?
And tell me, are you referring to the EMS storage facility?
EMS and also Fire was one, one, too.
We certainly can. Those, those storage buildings will hold EMS ambulances.
So, we can pull those out of the CIP?
Yeah, I think the only thing that we would need to check is to make sure that the heating and cooling that EMS ambulances will need for that storage building, but we can certainly look into that.
I don't remember if it had heating and cooling, but it would be much cheaper to add healing, heating and cooling to those than to build a whole new building for that.
You are correct.
Well, I'd like to see when we pass the CIP that that, those are completely eliminated. Thank you.
You bet.
Is this ARPA stuff or is this regular CIP?
This, I'm sorry for not clarifying. This is regular stuff. This,
ARPA.
This Elections Building, that is regular CIP. And then, I just threw in, because this is something that we're working on, this is not necessarily a our CIP, but this State Mental Health Hospital, statuses that we are in negotiations for the land. The A&E design firm has been awarded, and because of the federal funds that are involved with this, the estimated date that it has to be substantially complete is September of 2026.
You're welcome to tell me that this is a separate conversation and email me details on this. It works best. But you mentioned the West Central Health Clinic. We used to host a, kind of a quasi EMS post out of that Riverside Hospital, that area. That's no longer there, correct? What, what are we doing with that?
So, there's, I, I know that Andrew has been working with EMS, and they have identified a potential location for that EMS post. We are asking them for additional information on numbers of calls that they are making and per that particular location. So, we're waiting to get that, that information.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so now I want to move into the lease spreadsheet that you have before you. You all should have an 11 by 17 spreadsheet. So, I, I present this to you because I think this is, this is interesting. And I just, what I want to share with you on this is, when I started in Project Services, which is over 10 years ago, I can tell you that we had almost three times as many leases as you see on the spreadsheet, almost 30 leases. And so, this has dwindled down. Sometimes, from our doing, sometimes landlord has basically said, yeah, we, we no longer can offer you this lease. I think what is interesting with these leases is, I can tell you probably within the next maybe four to five years, we could probably dwindle this list down to maybe one to two leases. And so, I kind of want to walk you through these leases, and I may have to jump around a little bit, but just bear with me on this. So, for comm care, you see five leases listed here. So, you see adult services, and then I'm going to jump down to, to children's services, and then outpatient services. So, I've had a conversation with you on children's services and outpatient services, that we have a need, they are going to have to come out of their current leases, and we have a need to find space for them. I think there is a possibility to, in the next maybe four to five years, look at combining all three of those spaces, adult services, children's services, and outpatient, into a potential CIP to put them all in one location. And that would be most likely a purchase of a building and perhaps renovation, or maybe a new building. And so, that may be a potential CIP that you see maybe this year or next year, where we're just looking at what a cost might be to do a building renovation to put these three programs into a potential building. And so, that takes away three leases there and, and combines those three programs into one potential space. Let me jump down to comm care scope. That particular lease is going to go away because that is going to combine into the crisis building that we're building.
Right, okay.
Let me jump back up to Center City Homeless. That is one that I don't know that I can really speak to as far as a lease. That may, and I may refer to Tim on this. I, I don't know if there's potential where, with the City of Wichita MAC project, that, that there could be potential to do something there with that. But as of right now, I don't have an answer in particular on that lease.
Hey, Tim, are you, you're addressing homelessness tomorrow. Do you want to?
Maybe include your opinion on that?
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. JFS, as we just spoke about that, that particular CIP, that lease, that would go into that location, because again, what we're trying to do there is put all of the corrections juvenile programs together. So, that lease would potentially go away. Sheriff Offender Registration Unit, so what's interesting about the JFS lease and the offender registration unit, that lease at Harry Street, that's actually one lease together, even though they're two separate spaces. So, we had to find a space for Sheriff ORU. I approached the sheriff and asked him when the DA moves out, if he would consider moving this particular program into the annex at the courthouse. And he was agreeable to that. So, at the end of this year, we plan to move Sheriff ORU into the space at the DA annex. We'll move him into the lower floor, into the, the first floor. So, that puts Sheriff all in, in a very close area where he's got the jail, and then he's got judicial, and then, of course, ORU in the annex. Health WIC, I have an asterisk there because I don't know that I really have an answer to that particular lease. That's one that we're renegotiating right now. I, I talked to Tim about this. This is one that he thinks is important to kind of stay in the community. I don't know if that's one that we look at later to see if we get them out of a lease and try to find a building that we purchase. But that's one that, that I don't have an answer for. So, that's one that I think would potentially stay as a lease. Treasure East Tag Office, I may lean into Jeremy or Lindsay on this particular lease. I don't know if this is, potentially has a option to buy later for the treasure, but this is a lease that goes until 2028. And then, of course, the last one is our admin lease at the Roughen Building, and we know where we're at on that with an admin building. So, I just present this to you because I think that a lot of times, we have conversations about leases, and I think there's potential, again, to reduce some of these leases and be in, be an owned building. So, just want to present that to you.
Is it worth having a strategic conversation about what we, do we, are we okay with some leases? Do we want to try to get to acquisition and ownership of all buildings? Should that be a strategic conversation about where we need to be?
I, I think that staff's movement forward is to minimize leases as best we can. So, if you, if you, if you're hearing what Tanya is saying and seeing how she's describing this, we have, we're disenfranchised all over the county right now. We're, we're moving toward ideally a criminal justice campus at 525 and moving all of the ancillary criminal justice components to the annex and to, into Munger, into Ark Valley, whatever's available in that site. We're, we're beginning to talk about a comm care campus setting to where all the services are in one geographic location. A health campus, what's happening at KU Med is very interesting. We're watching that with the onset of comm, of Biomed, and what KU is going to move and what they're not going to move, and how that dovetails into our health campus. And then, of course, we've already had discussion about the juvenile campus. So, we're, historically, we've been disenfranchised all over. Now, we're getting very close to a four or five campus kind of component for county. And then, the loose hanging chat out there is admin building. What do we do with administration? And you guys will be tackling that within the next few weeks. And then, and then, I mean, we have the opportunity, maybe have zero leases or minimal leases. Unless the commission directs otherwise, that's the direction we're heading.
Okay.
And if I could, I do want to add on, even though we may move toward no leases, there are times where it makes sense, if it's a grant-funded program, where we don't know if that grant's going to be around forever.
Okay.
It may make sense to look for leased space at that time. Also, for things like, and I'm going to pick on the treasurer's office because it's a perfect example, the tag office is something, it's a, it's a state function that the county performs, but they get their own revenues, and that's not something the commission has any control over. Right? And so, it may make sense, and sometimes, to either lease, or if we're going to buy and, and bond fund, we can. But we know that some treasurers, as elected officials, have different preferences on how they operate those facilities. And so, that's another time where a lease may make sense if a treasurer doesn't want to commit the next treasurer to something. So, there are times where leases can make sense.
I agree, okay. Well, I just see the comm care, I mean, we're spending three quarters of a million dollars a year in base rent, base rents. Forget about any triple nets or anything like that, just base rents. I mean, we probably should have a broader conversation about what that looks like.
And to be fair, to be, to be fair, those were put into leases originally because a lot of them are grant-funded, and Lindsay's point is well taken. If it's grant-funded, that means it could begin and could end. But some of this is so historical, we're never going to get out of the business of doing a lot of this service, so we might as well just own at that point. So, that, but to be fair, that's how it all got started. And now, we're just trying to show it.
That makes sense.
You mentioned, you mentioned putting three things together. You said adult services, children's services. What was the third one?
Outpatient services, the one below children.
Okay. Now, I, I guess I'd like to know, is the adult services and children's services, are they really compatible to be in one facility?
And I may ask Tim to, to speak, but I think the only thing that I would say from a facility standpoint, we would probably make those separated in some sense, so the children's would have a separate entry, whereas outpatient and adult services would have a separate entry. But, Tim, go ahead.
It, it really comes down to design, building design. If you can separate entrances, if you can put distance between those two entrances, create some space between those, it's possible. Our services are really large, significant. We cover a lot of square feet. In smaller communities, smaller CMHCs, they may only have one building. And so, they're doing all their services out of one building. Ideally, we want to keep some separation of those populations, but I think with design, we can do that.
Do we have a short-term plan for children's services right now? Because I know that the leases up or something. What's happening with that right now?
Okay. So, for children's services and outpatient, we are currently looking at a facility that would, we would be able to lease. And that is, I think we spoke to you about that. That is a lease that's on Thirty, or Thirty-seventh and Webb.
Okay. And I remember that. I was, I was trying to get reminded of that. And then, you know, children's services is one of those things. Is, is that, is that fee-funded or is that property tax burden?
It's going to be almost 100% fee-funded. Comm care is about 10% general fund-funded. Most of that goes to the jail diversion programs and some of the crisis programs. So, most of the other programs that we're doing on behalf of the state or with the state are revenue-funded.
So, I think another way to look at this would be if, if a, if a function is fee-funded, much like the tag office, if it's fee-funded, I, I have less of a concern about whether it's leased or county-owned. I'm not as concerned in that case. I can tell you that being a lease, and it seems like some of these things, children's services is a good example. When I, I think when I first became a commissioner, I was moving right then from the building at Kellogg and Rock Road down to where it is today. And so, some of these things are, for some reason, they seem to move around a little bit. And the adult services, I think that may have been almost new to the building where it's in right now as well, about the same time. So, I'm, I think there's reasons why some of these things move around. And once you purchase a building, I think you're kind of committed to long-term commitment to that building. You're not going to want to change it, which is one of the reasons why I, I noticed over on the notes column, it does mention, to Commissioner Dennis's point earlier, mentions JRF demolition in the notes column. I think, I think the reality is, I don't know that we're there yet, but I think that maybe some miscommunication has happened. I think that is the intent. That is the, that is the current intent, apparently, is to, is to demolish JRF and replace that with a $22 million campus.
Well, and I, and I might, just might speak to that. As the manager mentioned, as we develop this RFP and we bring on an architectural firm, those are conversations that we can certainly have with the architect as we bring them on and have discussions, further discussions.
And just so everyone remembers, if I get this right, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, but this campus would be for juvenile field services, juvenile detention, juvenile detention facility, juvenile residential facility, which again, is a short-term, 30 days roughly residential. And it's not going to be, it's going to be near, near the current GIAC, which will not change.
Correct.
That's getting a camera enhancement under this program you just mentioned, which is also just north of the juvenile court system.
Correct.
Right? So, the court system's not changing, GIAC's not changing, but these three, JDF, JRF, and JFS are going to be combined. Me personally, I don't like the idea of JFS being there. I know that that may be convenient for staff. I think that's a mistake to put JFS at that location. So, I'll just say that once again. I'll probably be, I'll probably not be in favor of that. I've already said this before. I'll just say it again. I've already said this before, I'll just say it again. I don't think that's the right fit for JFS. And I do think that, to Commissioner Dennis's point, I believe that we ought to be looking at potentially fixing the facility because it's not that old. I always forget the age of the facility, but it's not that old. It has been neglected, I think. It does have some configuration challenges, but I think it's fixable. I'm not saying it's going to be cheap, but I think it's, it's less expensive than raising the building or replacing the building, in my personal opinion. We have spent, since 2017, talking about admin building, whether we're going to spend, you know, 10 million or 50 million. And this idea of juvenile campus came up almost overnight, and we essentially committed to 22 million in a staff meeting, I believe, which was consensus. I spoke about my concerns at the time, but we're moving forward. And if you're going to have a RFP for that, I don't know what we're going to tell the people to do an RFP if we don't have clear direction of what we're actually looking for. I don't think there's agreement necessarily here with that, what that should be. So I'm concerned that we are giving direction for what appears to be a staff understanding of our plan, but I'm not sure the commissioners have actually have ever really settled on what we're doing there. And if we have, if we have, I apologize for my misunderstanding. I would just like to go. Never mind, that's my last comment. Thank you.
The juvenile campus, how long is that? I don't know that it's fair to say it came up overnight. That's been in a CIP discussion for a while.
Variations have been in a CIP discussion, but the idea of a campus did come up through this latest CIP process because of all of the complications and things that were coming up. And Tanya can speak more to those details, but the CIP committee heard it, a compelling case was made, and that's why we felt inappropriate to try and get it done as quickly as possible because of the lease considerations and the other projects that we were delaying in order to have this conversation.
And then lastly, again, on the, I think once we get the architect and the architectural engineer onboard through RFP process, then the discussion begins about the moving pieces and operations of the facility and what options, I mean, just going ahead, I'm not sure, we'd have to determine who that vendor's going to be, but my, my goal would be to meet with Representative Owens and other people who are really dialed into the juvenile system, KDOC, and then do what we always try to do, is present options to the commission on how this could or could not go, and give you a multiple, with an engineer's eye on this thing, what he or she sees as the perfect operational setup, and have, put that back to you guys, debate it, and then decide on it. That's how I see this going.
And that's certainly something that an architect and engineer can, can provide for us.
Anybody, anything else for Tanya? Just got update.
Okay. Thank you. If you don't mind, because I still have time on my section, I'm going to switch gears to legislative stuff. Okay, commissioners, we talked about this yesterday, and I apologize because I did not bring the bills to discuss. However, these are potential letters for you on written testimony. First one is House Bill 2745. So this is what we discussed yesterday in the meeting. This is the bill that would exempt spouses of active duty military members from all application licensing, registration, and certification or permit fees associated with an occupational license. So this, Jason Watkins helped us with this letter. If you are in favor of this, there is a hearing, I think Monday morning at 10:30, so we need to get this in tomorrow morning as written testimony. So this is for your review and approval. And I'm happy to read this out loud if that would be helpful.
You, I just read it. Do you, any objections to this letter? I think we're, I think we're good, Tanya. Okay.
Okay. The second letter, this is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I read them both, they look, they look good.
Okay. The second one is House Bill 2754. We've talked about this. This is exempting us from the school inspections. This was written by Adrian, and so I think we've talked about this several times. Happy to read this out loud if you need me to, but this is for your review and approval.
Pete, you're good?
Yep.
David, you good?
Sir, Jim?
All good here.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Look, we're ahead of schedule.
Tanya, before you go.
Yes.
Yesterday, the bill passed unanimously out of the House for Father Capen, and it's on the way to the Senate. So it was good news that it was unanimous.
Okay, fantastic. And then we'll pay attention to that on the Senate side to make sure we get that written testimony there, too.
Thanks for the support.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
Now we move on to everybody's favorite subject, senior center funding strategy. I'm going, I've asked Tim to kind of just go back in history a little bit, give everybody kind of chapter one through four, and then we can start talking about the rest of the book here. But we're looking for some guidance today on how to move forward with this topic, especially in '25, but if there's any consideration in '24, we should talk about that today as well, so.
I'm going to cover this from three different angles, history, challenges, and some opportunities that may present themselves. And then we'd like to get some direction from you, whatever, we've got more information data, but just kind of want to hear what makes sense to all of you. Looking back, prior to 2007, which is when that funding formula was implemented, there was little uniformity in how senior centers were funded, and it was in large part dependent upon the skill of the senior center director, or maybe their board chair, to come to speak at a budget adoption hearing and make their case. And that was how funding amounts were determined, I think, in the history. That prompted more people to come to budget hearings after that. And then the other thing that happened was there was a disconnect between the funding that various centers received and the services and the types of services they offered. And so the staff worked from 2000, late 2004 into 2006 to develop a model to change the way senior centers wanted, to formalize that process a little bit, create some clear expectations about what types of services were expected, and then fix those dollar amounts that went with those. And in looking back, it appears that there were groups of funding amounts, so there were a number of people that were around between 2,000 and 4,000, there were a number that were around 12,000. And so they, there were some natural breaks, and they used that then to develop some expectations and differences between the various funding levels. With those new funding levels, they paired some clear expectations, but they also infused some new money into the system. So nobody took a loss going forward. They phased it in over two years, and they increased the funding for all of the system by about $100,000 over those two years. So that was one of the reasons it was so well accepted, was because there was additional funding available for everybody. And then, over time, there was an explanation at the beginning that if a particular center was able to perform at a higher level, and if funding was available, they could move up. Lots of folks forgot the second part of that message. And so the end of funding was available became an expectation. And so we did see in the early years some movement, some centers went up, some centers went down. The other thing that happened was that five different clubs during the early years dropped out. They were all at the, at the lowest level of funding, and I think some of those, it appears, closed, and others decided that they just weren't interested in the expectations that were tied to the money. And most of those were in the western part of Sedgwick County. So then the formula started to mature, pretty flat for a number of years, and we had budget challenges organizationally, 2008, '12, '16, which meant that we were flat funded. We were not doing movements for individual centers as they made changes in their service model, and that created dissatisfaction with senior centers and with advisory council members and staff as well, to be honest. But again, there was a disconnect between that message that people moved if there was funding available. There wasn't funding available in many of those years. Back in 2017, 2018, and actually in 2019, based on advisory council recommendations, we submitted, we, the department, submitted decision package requests that would have moved some centers from the level they were at to a higher level. But those requests did not make it through the budget process. They, they either stopped at the budget team area, that's usually where they made it. I don't think any of them even made it in the manager recommended back then. Then in 2019, as part of budget adoption, there was a direction to freeze that funding formula, and in response to that, the department did invite senior centers to identify projects. The goal was to shift from funding organizations to funding services. And so that was the goal. If a senior center could say, here's a new service that we're going to introduce, or an existing service that we're going to expand, that we look at decision packages related to those services rather than those senior centers, and try and infuse some additional capital through the decision package process at that point in time. Also, in both 2017 and later 2018, '19 as well, the department looked at a number of different funding models that could be implemented, presented them to commissioners in two-to-one environment, and there was never a consensus on a different approach to funding senior centers, in part because we were looking at a fixed amount of funding. And for anyone to get an increase, it meant somebody else was going to get a decrease. And so there was not much appetite to make those kind of changes. But we looked at population base over age 55, we looked at membership numbers, we looked at remaining at the status quo, and then again, looking at specific services as well. So our current environment is that in 2022, 2021, '22, '23, and even a little bit now, there has been CARES money and ARPA money that has come through the feds specifically for aging services, and they have, the department has spent that money with senior centers and in a lot of individual programming as well. But now that money's gone. And so it feels like there's a loss for individuals, even though we talked to them, and we funded one-time projects, capital projects primarily, but capital and equipment, that sort of thing. But again, senior centers are seeing that as a loss, or it feels like regression for them. And there are a couple of senior centers that are very adamant that they are ready to move up in terms of funding, and they're frustrated with that flat funding. There have been two senior centers through the budget adoption process that did receive additional funding in recent years. And again, we've got some confusion among senior center directors that don't understand that that formula was frozen back in 2019. And so that creates some dissatisfaction as well. So what are the challenges to this particular topic? Budgetary limitations, so not only at the county, but senior centers, you know, they're struggling budget-wise as well because their costs are going up, but we've had basically flat operating budgets for 15 years. And so that means there hasn't been a lot of growth for lots of different programs, including senior center funding. And in prior years, there has been some targeted funding reduction, I'm thinking specifically, I think in 2008 and maybe '12, where the aging mill levy funds go to senior centers, and they go to an array of services that are geared towards individuals, primarily in-home services. The fut, the funding cuts that were implemented held senior centers harmless by and large. And so those cuts have been more on the individual side rather than on the senior center side. The other issues, again, this was implemented in 2007. The seniors are much different in 2007 than they were, than they are now in 2024, for example. People are aging differently. One of the things that we know is that about 70% of the people over the age of 55 have a chronic health condition, and those chronic health conditions are more likely to be addressed by those targeted individual services than they are by what happens in senior center. It's a medical model versus a socialization model, really. And so that's a big change over time. And then older adults seek services differently. And I've looked at the folks that are on Tom's management team, and more than half of us, I think, would qualify for 55 and over services, but I don't think any of us have sought any services at a senior center. We go to our doctors and that sort of thing, but the demands are different.
Hey, Tim, can I ask you? You, you said a stat there, 70% of seniors qualify, or you said something about 70%. Can you reiterate that stat?
70% of the people over the age of 55 have at least one chronic health condition.
That is wild.
The other thing, and it may be in here, the fastest growing population, aging population is those over the age of 85. Once you get over 75, the frequent, the preponderance of folks have more than one chronic health condition. They've got two or three, and that's the population that's, that's growing the fastest right now. Again, because longevity numbers have changed dramatically as well. Again, competing demands, well, there it is, right there. That 85-plus population is growing the fastest, and they're the, the part of the population that's most likely to have multiple chronic health conditions as well. And then the aging department did a strategic plan, they're in the process of renewing it again, but they worked with a number of different people, and those are the, the key criteria that they came up with to focus on. A comprehensive system of coordinated healthcare primarily, housing, transportation, addressing perceptions of aging and wellness, and then the intersection of mental health and aging. And that was, you can see who was involved in those discussions, who provided that feedback. There's not much overlap with what you can get at a senior center with those things. The perceptions of aging and wellness, I think senior centers do that well, but they don't necessarily do all of those other things as well. So there's that limited overlap with the needs and what senior centers may be providing right now. And then the model itself may be part of the struggle that we have. There's six different levels of funding, wide variety of services that are offered. When WSU did their study a couple of years ago, there was no best practice in terms of funding senior centers. It's all across the board, all across the country. There's, you know, dozens of ways to do it, but there's no one particular way that's been identified to say, this is how you ought to fund your senior centers if you're choosing to fund senior centers. I will point out that our aging department has won awards, national awards, for the last 20 years, a lot of them. And this model that we implemented won an award as well, in part because it clearly defined criteria, and then it matched up funding with it. So at the time, it was really good implementation. We've struggled to keep up, keep up with it, and, and that's because it was dependent on ongoing increases in funding, and so that just has not materialized. What are the opportunities that we have? One of them is that we have One of them is that we have offered to all of the senior centers now a new tracking system, an information system, so that they, so we can more discreetly understand who comes, what kind of services they participate in, what they like, what they don't like. And so that gives us information that we, if we want to change the way we fund senior centers, we should have better information by the end of this year. And it will also give those senior centers additional information that they can go out and seek grant funding on their own if they want to. But we've made that information system available to them to help them with that data gathering. We could look at future decision packages, there are a number of different ways that we could consider to do that. We've talked at the department level about a cost of living increase to just reset all of those levels by two percent, five percent, ten percent, whatever the appetite of the budget can handle. Another opportunity is, again, to focus on increased, targeted increases based on utilization and new services. We could return to the old formula, we could reevaluate all of the centers, for example. We could maybe implement a moratorium, you know, if we went through a process where we redetermined everybody and said, this is the category that you're funded at, and this is where, this is all of our appetite, we cannot fund you beyond this. We encourage you to continue to deliver different services, more services, but we just can't fund them. That would be another option available to you. And then the other opportunity is for senior centers, and they have a chance to look at some of the data that we've shared with them, and they can think about different socialization opportunities, updating the services that they offer, and increasing the relevancy to a broader audience. Because right now, the percentage of seniors or individuals over the age of fifty-five that participate in service at senior centers is a pretty small, narrow slice, but it's good value. So where would you like us to go from here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start with saying that I am not opposed to funding or additional funding for senior services. And I want to differentiate that because senior services includes nutrition programs, roving pantry, commodity distribution, Sedgwick County In-Home Program Care, medical, critical needs, transportation, aging, medical services, health screening, adult daycare, counseling services, RSVP, senior employment, aging legal services, senior companion, Alzheimer's Association, and senior centers. We do a lot for senior services, and I don't disagree that we need to fund all of these things. And I don't eliminate any of them, I think all of them are important. Now, we have five districts, and the five districts are very different in some respects, but they are absolutely similar in one, and that's population. We are divided up equally based on population. So if you take that population and take a look at it, each of us have probably the same, fairly close, the same number of people over fifty-five, that seventy percent of those have some kind of chronic care. So we need to take care of those individuals. Then when you take a look at my district individually, totally out of, and we just added Goddard this last year, they weren't getting funding prior to that, but if you take the five, the total amount going just to senior centers is ninety-one thousand dollars. That's far less than just one in another district that's a hundred and fifteen thousand, or it's pretty close to another one that's getting eighty thousand, several getting fifty-seven thousand. What that's doing, especially with the formula, and why I've got so much problem with the formula, is that that formula rewards the rich because they can provide more services very easily because we give them a lot of money, and it penalizes the poor because they don't get hardly anything, so they can't add any additional services. So as a result, we reward certain groups and we penalize other groups. And unfortunately, the ones we penalize are all in my district. So that's what concerns me. So some of the ideas that were put out here is maybe take a look at a formula based on population of fifty-five and over members. I did look at some of the data that Tim provided us, and it shows in my district, for example, we have the least members and the least daily attendance. Why is that? Because I have half the county. And we have very poor senior centers to begin with, and then having to travel long distances to get to one of them, especially if you don't have good transportation, you're not going to be there. So I don't, I think that we need to really make sure that we concentrate on the first fourteen, maybe a little bit more, to take care of those that are over fifty-five, and make sure that the fifteenth one, senior centers, is funded somehow proportionally to the number of people over fifty-five, rather than saying that we're going to reward the rich and penalize the poor. So that's been my problem all along, I'm not trying to politicize this whatsoever. I know that in the past, everybody accuses us of politicizing this. I want to make sure that we are treating our seniors equally, and we are doing the things that are necessary to support those that are over fifty-five. But that's been my concern all along and will continue to be my concern. Thank you.
You know what I'm going to say? We've had this conversation so many times, I don't have to repeat myself probably, but I feel like I need to now. We don't take the budget and divide by five. I don't get twenty percent of the road money, do I, in my district? I don't think so. That doesn't make sense. Or twenty percent of the public safety being spent, or economic development, or go down the budget. There's a lot of things in the budget we could look at and say, is it divided equally among five districts? The answer is no. I haven't seen the data lately, but we did get, I did get data a couple of years ago, and I can dig it up. I talked about assessed value and wage income by district, and the districts are very different than each other on these socioeconomic factors. The homes in my district are much smaller, the lots are smaller, the cars are older, on it goes. I have Plainview, Hilltop, Oaklawn, and Sunview in my district. We don't have any public transportation that we don't subsidize that goes through Oaklawn. Oaklawn especially is a concern because they have people from all over the county that come to Oaklawn Senior Center to get services. And the only other funding they get from, it comes from the Oaklawn Mill Levy for an improvement district. They're not a city, but they're city-like, and they're struggling. If they don't find a solution to the revenue challenge, they're going to have to close. And that's a problem. They have been to us in recent meetings making a plea. And if we would have the, if the old formula was in place, they would be deserving of additional level of funding. But they can't maintain that, and they certainly can't just do what they're doing now. So something's going to have to give. I know you started back in two thousand and seven, if you go back to nineteen eighty-two, when the ballot question was provided to the people that passed on the, about two to one, people voted for it two to one and it passed. It created a bit of a mandate to the county. Now, our interpretation of the mandate is the zero is a number. The question was, shall Sedgwick County levy a tax up to one mil for service programs for the elderly, which is, I think, by the plain definition of that is it's a block grant. I don't think it's intended that we would actually provide services that are operated by Sedgwick County. By the way, those fifteen, fourteen things that Commissioner Dennis just named, I believe, you can't be wrong, but fourteen of those are either fully funded through grant revenues or there's a local match that makes those grants, those grant programs work in Sedgwick County. The only one that's solely funded through Sedgwick County is the senior center funding. I'll stop for just a minute. You want to correct that, please?
I believe the document that Commissioner Dennis read off is actually just the property tax funds. Not all of those do have a complement from grants or are matching. That comes from Fund Two-O-Five.
Okay, I'll go look at that again. But, you know, for example, you talk about nutrition programs. Nutrition programs primarily are done through senior centers. We have transportation programs that tend to depend on senior centers for a way to operate, and on it goes. Senior centers, if they didn't exist, we would have a trouble, you know, providing services through missing senior centers because right now, that's how we deliver services. Also, I don't know how much of the one mil is consumed by administrative costs of our aging department. I know that's probably broken out somewhere, but I don't know how that calculates into the mill levy equivalent funding that we talk about every year. Total funding for senior centers, I believe the base funding, if it's frozen, is what, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars? That's right? Six twenty-nine?
And then there have been a couple of increases since then.
Roughly, it's about total of one-tenth of a mil to fund all of the senior centers currently. All right? About one-tenth of a mil. Okay. You know, I feel like we have had, I don't know how many, public fights about this. If you want Oaklawn to close, then do nothing. I can't make a more passionate plea than that. I understand David Dennis, Commissioner Dennis, has nine small cities in his district, plus he has Wichita. I have Mulvane, Derby, and Wichita, so we have Wichita in common. Wichita, back in nineteen eighty-two, when that motion, when that ballot question passed, Wichita stopped funding senior centers, they did before that. They transferred the funding to the county because the question passed, so Wichita dropped them. And so it didn't create more revenue necessarily, it just shifted where the money comes from. And I would say that a lot of the smaller cities like Hayesville and Mulvane and Derby, Derby's not small, but other places around the county where these senior centers exist, a lot of the cities do donate, donate, donate funding to the senior centers as well. In fact, Derby donates more than we do, by quite a bit, at least about quarter million dollars a year from Derby, in addition to a hundred and fifteen thousand from us. But you know what? It's also a class of its own, it's nationally recognized, and it provides services to the entire county, frankly. All of Sedgwick County uses it and beyond. People outside Sedgwick County come to that senior center. So it's very unique in what it does. I would say this, we're going to, we're going to have a fight about potentially funding, I think probably two or three or four senior centers to the next level altogether, what's the value? Do you know? Total value is, I think, less than a hundred thousand dollars for those four to be increased to the next level. And I think they deserve it. They are struggling to provide services without it. If we want them to reduce what they do, then we can do nothing. But they need the money. You know, we think about mental health, for example. We don't divide the money by five and say, I want twenty percent of the mental health funding to be spent in my district. We don't do that. We spend the money where it's needed. And I think that this is one of those things where seniors come to those resources because they need those resources. It just is what it is. I don't know, there's an issue of fairness, you know, we wear two hats as commissioner. We advocate for our district, we also advocate for the whole county. This is one of those things where we advocate for the whole county. And I'm sorry, District Five has more money than the other four districts, okay? I'm sorry about that. But that's where the seniors that need the greatest, have the greatest help, that's where they happen to be. The wage income's less, the assessed value is less, the crime is more, and I can go on. I don't think we ought to continue this fight over a hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Okay, my turn, I guess, here. I do have a question. When this froze in twenty nineteen, how many senior centers were frozen at the level they were at that really could have been moved up that year had we made those changes?
My guess is there are probably, because we had submitted decision packages in prior years, I think for a total of four, I think two of those have been picked up in subsequent years. So there may be two, somewhere between two and four kind of outstanding there.
So, and how did the, when we did that in, was it twenty-two, for two centers that we moved up to the next? How did that come about?
It was part of the motion to adopt the budget. There were two of them that were identified, and they were additional funding. Funding came from contingency to fund two additional, to increase two senior centers.
Okay, so the two that didn't get moved up are, happened to me in the second district. So I would really like to see just for us to be equitable in how we're funding these from when they were frozen to where we're at today, to get those two at least moved up. I'm really at the point where I think we should at least look at the budget, like how do we, the funding model for this? I think there are things that we could do. I don't think it's going to be a massive change, but I think that there are ways that we should at least look at these senior centers again because it has been frozen for so many years. I think we owe it to our senior centers to have the conversation on what that could potentially look like going forward, and looking at each senior center individually and seeing what the needs are and what they're providing now. I don't think there's anything wrong with having the conversation and just seeing what like a budget impact would be on that, but I would really like to get the senior centers that should have been funded, and however many there were, to where they should be. Because I do feel like for the last handful of years, they've been penalized almost by not receiving the funding that they had been working years to achieve before we froze things. So that's kind of, and I don't think that there's many. I know for sure the two in my district are there. I think there are a couple others that could be there too. So I would like to see what the cost would be, and like Commissioner Howell said, it's well under a hundred thousand, I would imagine, for those to go up. But I would really like to start there, but then also look at just how do we do the funding model in general going forward is the conversation I think we should have.
But I guess my question is, how does Bentley move up when they get five thousand a year? How does Cheney move up when they get five thousand a year? How does Goddard move up when they get six thousand a year? How does, Mount Hope is in better shape, they get eighteen thousand a year. And then Orchard Park is in the city of Wichita, so they get quite a bit, fifty-seven thousand, which is more than all the rest of them combined. So how do my district, and I then, I disagree with Commissioner Howell, we all have the same amount of people. That is a constant. We're always going to have the same amount of people. How do we serve those over fifty-five in my district with this small amount of funding?
Well, I think we need to look at all of the senior centers and what they're providing, and because I don't necessarily think that if we're looking at the funding model that it has to say, this was the funding model as it was before, and this is the way it needs to be now. We just, I think we need to kind of start over in many ways on what the needs are. And I think that changes some of that conversation on, you know, they only have five thousand now, well, is that really where they need to be? I mean, I think it should be a holistic approach and not just, like, this is how we used to do it, so this is kind of trajectory where we should be going still, but really overall, what could this be going forward? And I think that addresses concerns from both things from what I'm hearing.
As long as we're not penalizing the poor districts and rewarding the ones that are getting a ton of money.
My, my thought is that I really appreciate the last couple of years where we had the, really the one page about senior services, and you could see what, what senior centers portion was of the senior services, which, whereas, that's not the brochure, but it's, but it's the numbers, right? That's very valuable to know, I think. I know we've had spirited conversations about senior centers. I am, I am okay with increasing senior services at whatever fits in our budget that distributes senior services, because a lot of seniors- senior services, because a lot of seniors get services that never use the centers. And so I think isolating, and I guess if we wanted to look at all the centers and kind of reformulate, as you're talking, Commissioner Lopez, I'm not, I'm not against that at all. If we wanna toss it up and relook at it, some will get more, and some will get, get their feelings hurt, but, but I just, can I, a question, well, two things then. I don't mind, I guess if you isolated senior centers and said, we could increase them across the board, cost of living, for instance, because their utilities go up and all that stuff. So they have some CPI stuff that maybe you could justify us increasing some spending there, but not, I'm not for blowing up the whole big senior services budget just to handle senior centers, that's where I weigh in. But the other thing, the question is, do we, I love that you put a bullet of grant-seeking opportunities. Lindsay, are we comfortable with our grants department that has done a fantastic job the last year-plus, looking at the thousands of grant opportunities? Have we, have they looked into senior center?
No. We have not dug into that, but I think it's something that if that's a priority for the commission, absolutely we can spend time looking into those resources.
My guess is between nonprofits, nonprofit grants and, and obviously federal government grants related to seniors in general, there's probably some grant opportunity out there. If we could put that as a to-do list, just to look into it at least, we might find some nuggets there. And then, like I said, cost of living, I'm fine with. I mean, if the will of the board is to, is to blow up the whole formula on senior centers, I'm okay with it. I don't want to be on that committee. And, but you all can, so. It actually thought, due to conflict of interest, I think Commissioner Dennis and I should recuse ourselves from this, from this vote. Okay, thanks for letting me say it.
I just looked at the funding a second ago. I believe it's $90,000 is what, I believe, if La Familia, Central District, Commissioner La Familia, Clearwater, Oakland, and Hayesville moved up to the next level, I believe it's $90,000. That's .14 mils, $90,000. As someone just said a second ago, inflation has been hard. It was a 9% inflation rate. Electricity costs more, their labor rates cost more, their commodities cost more. They've had no adjustments. We expect them to perform, and we still collect, I think, performance data on these senior centers. It's, something's gotta give. You know, our budget's gone up over the same years, I think this was frozen in, what, 2019? Five years ago, it was frozen? How much has our budget gone up in the last five years, I wonder? I don't even wanna ask, but I guess my point is, if we, and I understand the difference between senior centers and senior services, I get it. Again, I'll make a point, senior services, many of them are delivered through senior centers, that's true. Second of all, I'm not suggesting we would pull money from senior services to do this. I think those services are important. I'm simply saying, we have a lot of seniors in the community that depend on these senior centers. If you don't want them to go away, then we can just do nothing. They're gonna go away. It's $90,000. I could probably find $90,000 elsewhere in this budget. You wanna play a zero-sum game of our budget game here, we can do it. I can find $90,000 somewhere else. I think these things are, I think these are important, and I'd like to fight for them a little bit. Thank you.
So do we wanna look at the model? Is that, do we wanna take a comprehensive look and look at the model, funding model, or do we wanna try to dissect out a couple of these and figure out?
Well, I think it makes sense to take a comprehensive look, and let's, let's go a little bit further back. There are gathering areas in this county where people over the age of 55 go to socialize. Eighteen of them are funded senior centers by Central County, 19 County Derby. I think when this started back in the day, that some gathering places for seniors originally opted in to try to get some county dollars, and then it was so much bureaucratic red tape, they decided it wasn't worth it, and they got back out. So I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna start over, that we ought to probably open this up across the county to any senior gathering place. I mean, this is option one, I'm not gonna tell you what we're gonna, you guys need to pick, but option one is to open it up across the board again and determine, do you want to apply for county funding to operate your senior gathering place? And that could be 18, it could be 12, it could be 36, I don't know. Or we simply keep the population the same today of the 18-plus Goddard, 19, and we retool them from ground up on services provided. I think everybody's okay with the five tiers. I don't know if that's an issue, or we can look at them. It's the funding of those five tiers, so that's question one. And then question two, if we're going to fund more to those, do we do that within the aging budget, or do we go outside the aging budget into a more global general fund budget and find that 90 or 100,000, whatever it's gonna cost, and migrate more general fund money into aging services, would make some sense. Tim didn't talk about the demographics of the population, or if he did, I missed it, that the society's getting older. That, that's a fact. So it does make some sense for the commission to look at increasing that funding for that population, because it's more than it was 10 years ago, and it'll be more than it is today 10 years from now. So it makes sense to look ahead. So the, there's a migration of budget here, you gotta, this is roadblock number one, this is, this is controversy number one, where you have a need for more money, we're gonna be limited, we're already in imbalance, Lorian's gone over the forecast. What do you wanna shift? How do we wanna shift it? Where do we wanna take from to fund this? If it's within the aging budget, that's one thing. If it's going back out into the larger budget, that's another thing. So those are the things that we'll think about, and we'll strategize and come back to you on. I see no problem retooling the 18 existing and Goddard, and come back to you and report of what that immediate cost would be to balance that ledger. But I think that it raises a topic for a greater, a greater look. That's up to the commission on how far you wanna go with this.
Let me ask a question. Besides, besides the 1% sales tax and the aging mill levy, is there anything else that we ever went through a ballot of the people and find out what they want us to do? Is there anything else out there besides those two?
WSU.
WSU, thank you, there is a third one. And that was a choice between city doing 1.5 mils versus county doing 1.5 mils.
Taxpayers.
Pardon me?
The public voted on that. I thought years ago.
I'm sorry, 1 mil. I'm sorry, 1.5 mils, 1.5 mils. I, I am actually a fan of, because this is, I'm an advocate of trying to get the politics out of some of this, some of these discussions. They never seem to end. I was a fan of the zoo funding that should never change. It was 1.359 mils funding, and they gave up about 11 or 12 million dollars because they shifted to a multi-year funding agreement. They gave up a lot of money. I think it was less political before, they should have never done that. In fact, I tell you, if you talk to the zoo folks today, I think they're actually interested in going back to something like we had before. I talked to them, and that's what they said. I think that the fact that this has a variation of zero to one as a new interpretation, clearly, when people voted for this, they wanted, they wanted funding for senior programs, block grant dollars for seniors. That's what they wanted. Our new interpretation, frankly, I think it's a weasel way of looking at this. We're weaseling our way out of this deal, because we think zero is a number. All we did was we capped it at 1, 1 mil. That's what we think now. That's not what the people thought when they voted for it. To that end, I'd like to firm this up and put it back on the ballot. If the people vote it down, we can drop this entirely. People vote it up, it's crisp.
It's emotional, seconded at this point.
I'd make a motion, we put this back on the ballot, but I'd like to have a firm number. I'll do, I'll do it later, in a future, I'm sorry, is that legal? In a future meeting, I will make a motion, Mr. Dennis, I'll make a motion at a future meeting, and I would like to see this crisped up and put back on the ballot for confirmation of what the people want us to do.
Put it on the ballot. I'm for it.
Okay. I think that's the way to solve it, and guess what, we'll never have to argue about this ever again. Okay? Thanks.
Can we have a special election, say, again, five this year?
I think we can handle this with, with, we can take it down a notch a little bit. I think, obviously, this is an emotional topic for a lot of people. I think right now, we just need to look at what the data's gonna show us. What, what are the needs of the seniors today? Are those needs different than they were 10 years ago? Should the funding be different than it was at that time? I mean, I think there's a lot of things that just need to be looked into. I really wanna see some of these senior centers moved up because, and I would like to see that this year, if that's at any way possible, because I think that they've been, should have been receiving this funding for a long time and haven't been, and so I think that's on us that we have not adjusted those things, and so I would like to see what can be done about that now. But I do think going forward, we need to look at senior centers in general and what the needs are, and really what we need to do just to be a better partner with them. So we can just kind of take it down a notch. I know this is, this is an exciting topic.
Well, you can't, you can't vote today, it's a workshop, so we can't make motions.
But we have a motion in a second.
There is no clerk, well.
There's no.
Yes, we will, I'm, I'm gonna tally a list as we go, and I forgot to mention this during the beginning today. Part of the purpose of this retreat is to gather topics or information that you want more on, and then we'll workshop those between now and May. This is on the list now, and we'll bring it back into a workshop setting, and based on that workshop information, then Commission at a subsequent meeting, BOCC meeting, can make motions in seconds, and we can talk about.
Just workshop it, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, all right, very good. This is why this is everyone's favorite topic, but in all seriousness, it's important, understanding the aging demographic shift in this county, that we're having this discussion, so, okay.
Very good. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Are you voting?
No.
No, but.
Lindsay said no.
Can I? Can I just remind our colleagues, I know a, a vote sounds nice, but I don't know what the budget is on that. What is it, 13 million a year? Something like that for senior services?
Yeah.
Something like that, 14, whatever. I'm not sure that the public would, they might question that we're having quite a debate and actually go to the, go to the vote on a $500 million budget for a $14 million sliver. There might be other more important things to publicly vote on. But I hear everybody, I'm okay with all the discussion, I'm just caution that maybe we step back and breathe a little bit sometimes.
Well, and, and Commissioner Maitner, their total budget now that CDDO is included is right at 20.2 million, but what we're talking about today, only 3.1 million comes from the aging mill levy fund, and I think that's where the focus is directed at this point, so.
Thank you, and I respect everybody's opinion on this, I really do.
Okay. What do you think, Tom?
Ten-minute break. Okay, the next topic is, Brent is going to give a overview of community program funding, a historical overview, and then everybody at their place table has a, everybody's favorite policy, and you can see the date on it, it's 11/6/19, the community program funding request policy that we'll revisit today, and looking for a little bit of direction from the commission on. So Brent, if you will, give us the history, and then we'll get into policy.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Good afternoon, commissioners. Let me preface this by saying that we have a mantra when we look at these requests, and that is spend no dime before it's time. So we, we're not looking to come to you to look for ways to, to add expenditures. As we look through the community program funding today, as Tom mentioned, I wanna talk to you a little bit about what we did last year, the activity in 2023. We'll talk a bit about the process. We'll go over some of the questions that we asked, and then look at that policy draft for your consideration. So last year, as you can see, we received nine funding requests. The total of these requests was $9,730,000. Now, if you fully funded those in one year and used property tax revenue, that's equivalent to 1.6 mils. So this is a significant amount of, of requests that we're seeing. As you can see from here, four of these, the top four, were either funded or partially funded from this $9.7 million request, and they were funded for a total of $4.8 million. So just about, almost half of the request amount was funded last year. The five that you see on the bottom did not receive funding, and they ranged from three recurring requests, which is Humankind, Pro Hoops, and Raise My Head. They asked us to get funding in 2023 and be part of ongoing budgets. The others were requesting one-time funding.
Is Humankind intended to be reoccurring, $200,000?
It has not been committed for any future year.
So they requested reoccurring, but we only, only approved it up at one time?
Yes.
So without a policy, we have developed some process around these funding requests.
And what we look for in the, in the process, once a funding request comes from the manager's office, from the commission, Valerie becomes the point person for those funding requests. She's in contact with that agency, so that removes it from commission or manager, puts it into finance, where we walk through and do, walk through this process. What we have implemented just in the past year, we've got now two questionnaires or two funding request templates that we're using. And the first one up there, the initial funding request template, we are looking to immediately call from the list, or from the request, those that are not emergency-related funding requests. There's gotta be a dire reason why they're coming to the county for money. So that's something that we put in place. I'll show you kind of what we look for, because these folks deserve an immediate no if, rather than run them through a two-to-three, four-month process if it's not going to happen. If they get past that, then we go through a more detailed funding request template, and then we start our internal review. Now, if there's an economic development component, we'll try to do a return on investment. We only had one last year that met that qualification, or that, that we did a return on investment. That was the nextest funding that you saw late in the year. We want to also see if these are in line with the county mission. If this isn't something that we want to be pursuing, that's a pretty, that's a pretty solid disqualifier. Once we've gone through that process, we do a summary of all the information that we've received, make a recommendation to the county manager that it's either a, we recommend funding, or we don't recommend funding. If we don't recommend funding, that's usually the end of it at that point. It's not coming to you, so some of those that are on that list, you probably didn't see last year. If there's some consideration, we recommend that you consider that funding, then it'll go through 221s, you'll hear it in your staff meetings, meetings with Tom, and then, based on what we're hearing there, it's either brought to a formal BOCC meeting for the consideration, or we notify the applicant that funding has been rejected. We ask three primary questions when we're looking at that initial questionnaire. In addition to who they are and what they're asking for, why is this an emergency? What happens if we don't fund it? Are you gonna go out of business? Or is some service, what's gonna happen? Why is it emergency, and what will happen if we don't step up? And then the third thing, which I think is also important, as important as the other two, what are you doing to make sure you don't come back? Because we're not trying to build expenditures in our budget, we're looking, if it's an emergency and we need to step in and do it, what are you doing as an organization to make sure that this is a one-time event? This is an exogenous event, you're not gonna come back, how are you sustainable as a result of, of us helping out at this point? Yes?
Can you consider, or this is my, my thought, so, but could you consider what, if there's any value in your initial questionnaire of what and where else have you applied or requested funding and been either approved or rejected?
Uh huh. Certainly.
Might be helpful. I think, I think that's part of the process in G W P or some other areas.
Uh huh.
They may have to supply that, either grant funding, or even their own board or directors have been pleaded, and they've rejected. That.
Okay, right.
Puts them in a tough spot.
Sure. Okay. Because we want to be at the tail end of, they need to have exhausted other funding sources.
Okay.
And then we want to see two years of financial information at this point. And what that tells us is, if this is, if they're looking for one-time funding for an ongoing need, if they are, they've got some systemic imbalances, and what we're going to do doesn't help. So we want to see the, the financial information at this point. And typically, then, if they get past that point, we would go to another questionnaire where we're going to get into more detail. And this questionnaire, when we send that out, and these are all on a fillable form, so they, they have an unlimited amount of space on the form to fill out, answer the question, and then submit that back to us. But now we want a little bit more about the organization or the specific project. A couple of the funding requests that went through last year were for capital campaigns. So what's the project? What are you trying to do? We had some that we didn't fund that were for capital campaigns. So sometimes it's that one-time project, other times, they need something for the organization as a whole. We also want to know how this, how they align with the county mission. What do they do for quality of life in the community? Are they affiliated with other organizations? How do they work together? Tell us how they're legally structured, because that's going to affect whether we can or can't provide them with funding. We go into program outcomes, and here we want to know how they're measuring those program outcomes. What are they? How do they define success? And how do they measure that success? And one of the questions that we always ask is whether or not they're going to get any operational efficiencies out of this. So if we provide them with one-time money, maybe they're going to acquire some sort of, of an asset that helps them deliver those services more efficiently or more effectively. And then finally, we ask about any county recognition. Sometimes there's a plaque. K P T S has a plaque outside a conference room when we provided them with funding a couple of years ago. We have, so that's just one example. And then what typically happens is, as we get answers to questions, that creates more questions, and we dig in deeper. So that's pretty much the process that we're going through today. But we want to make sure that we are that last resort, if you will.
So I have a couple of questions, and I want to make a point and try to get some feedback from my colleagues. This community program funding request, is this a specific line item in our budget that is separate from economic development and mental health? Okay. So I'd love some feedback on direction forward on some of these things. I, my belief from my seat, that we've got, we have got to focus as hard as we can on core services, and what we do with core services here. Some of these things, when I ask about the county government doing these things, I, you know, I, and we put ourselves in this position, even this last year, if you look at some of the things that we funded, we funded things that really aren't the purview of county government. And we've got, we got sheriff deputies, we've got 911 dispatchers, we've got EMS paramedics, we've got, we've got real significant needs that are in the purview of county government. So I, I would, I think that, we look at, we have an economic development contingency, we have a mental health contingency. Those are in the purview of county government in many regards. I would entertain and like to have a discussion about eliminating the community program altogether. And we fund these types of requests through the guardrails of our economic development fund or our mental health contingency fund, which is specifically and squarely in the framework of county government and what we do. Instead of playing a loose game of, something like Nexus, that's economic development. We should have, did we fund that through this community program, or do we do that through economic development fund?
Because they were a nonprofit, they went through this process. And we have two templates. We've got one for an economic development request. We've got one for a community development request. We haven't used the economic development request, because those have been coming through the partnership, looking for different types of incentives. And they have that separate policy.
Right. I guess my point is, is it possible to merge, merge that into one fund? That a way, we have some guardrails and parameters. We're allotting a budget amount, and eliminate, that a way, it's all being pushed either, we have the mental health contingency, we have the economic development contingency. It's one or the other. It's squarely in our purview.
Do you mind if I speak to that, Brent?
Please.
Thank you. So all of this does live in the general fund. And we have something that, I'm going to bore you to tears again. This is why I brought you guys cookies. The gaffer, it is a big, ugly, blue book that tells us where we have to separate our, out our spending, so that we can clearly communicate to our citizens what we're doing. So as a practical matter, the commission could choose from now on to eliminate any community program funding in the budget, and allow it to go through a process like this if you wanted it to. The economic development program is actually a budgeted program. It's not a contingency. It's a, it's just, we don't always forecast to spend every penny of it.
Okay.
You're right, though. The mental health contingency is truly a contingency. But even in economic development, we don't plan to spend all the money. You remember that the budget in there is about 1.8 million. We have 400,000 that goes to G W P. We have other incidental funding that comes up through funding requests that gets approved. So there's a match for the rail spur that we're just talking about now, out west. So those things can come up, and there is a pot of budget authority that's tied to that, because it makes sense. If you look through the budget book at community programs, there's a community programs that lives in human services, because that funds Child Advocacy Center, and that funds Oaklawn Transit and Mediation Center, because it makes sense for that to live there. That's community development. Then there's culture and rec community programs that funds things like you're talking about, T C A M, Wichita Sedgwick County Historical Museum, the fair, things like that. So we try and put it in the book, in the way in which we are told that any citizen should be able to go to that budget book, or to our financials and figure out where we spend. So yes, we can step back and figure out how to reorient the budget, but we really need direction from you on how, how to then allocate it. Or do we even allocate any at the beginning?
I think that's what I'm trying to provide, is I don't know, we should be touching some of those areas. I mean, not with our core services and the need for concern. We're going to talk about it tomorrow, but I, I will make a comment tomorrow that I, I will be a no vote on any budget that increases a mill levy here, a mill levy rate. But yet, we're going to have incredible demand on some of these things, and we've got to make some really difficult decisions. So I just think that there's things that county government's doing that maybe is not in our purview, and I think we need to have that discussion in a big way. Not just in one-on-one meetings, and not just inside conversations anymore, but a real conversation about what is at the purview of city government, what's in the purview of county government, and how do we really, how do we designate ourselves into our core services in a way that really matters and is meaningful? And I'm not saying we tell people no tomorrow. I'm saying, how do we look at a three-to-five-year glide path even in some of these things? There are things that we're funding are not in the purview of county government, and we're not able to do some of the things in 911, some of the things in EMS, some of the things that we need to do because of it. And that's just a hard reality when you look at the math, unless we want to raise taxes. And I'm not doing that. So I, I just think that we need to have a real, honest conversation with ourselves about community program and funding requests. I appreciate the guardrails. I appreciate some of these things, but, but I'm really going to try to push this to core services as much as possible. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I agree with the chairman. I think our first step is to get this resolution passed as soon as possible, because we have to have something that we can hang our hat on. I've said it a lot of times, that there are 2,000 great nonprofits in Sedgwick County. We can't fund them all. I don't know that we should be funding any of them, because if the public has decided that that was not something, that that's nonprofit that they should support, why should we take the public's money and say, we're smarter than they are, and we're going to fund it instead, because they're not funding it adequately? So I, I don't want to be the stopgap for nonprofits to come to us and say, well, we're, we can't get enough money from the community, so you got to help us with that. First step is to get this passed. I, I do believe that even if it ever comes to us, that it has to fit our core mission. I, I am not going to vote for a mill levy increase either. So that's two votes for not having a mill levy increase. So that's, that's pretty positive. But as we move forward, we have to make sure that the public understands what that they're coming to us for. So, but I do have a couple of other questions that I'd like answers to. We did fund Exploration Place, and as good partners, I thought the city was. I have not heard that the city has done anything. I'd like to hear from that. We do fund the Historical Museum. I, I want to make sure that the city is a good partner, and that they're helping us with the, with that. What else has we funded lately? C A C, we put in a lot of money. I believe the city was supposed to be their partners with us in the C A C. I want to know, has the city supported us in the C A C? So even things that we've already passed, that if, if we're partners in these things, we need to make sure our partners are actually working with us as partners. Thank you.
Okay. Other, other thoughts on that? I, I would be supportive of this as a, as a good start. I really think these are some of the guardrails we need. I appreciate the work that's been done into it. I, I'm just saying, I would like to expand the conversation about really trying to narrow the scope of when we do fund things that are not a part of our everyday budget, that we, they are very narrowly scoped into things that really fit our mission. And it seems to me, we have two funds that are out there. One's a contingency, one's a regular line item, in economic development and mental health, that we can rework those in some way. I, I don't know. I just think that we get, we put ourselves in a position sometimes that are really precarious. And, and I think everybody up here is compassionate and has a heart and wants to help, and can make a case. We could make a case, politically even. We can make a case that a lot of these things deserve funding. And, and you know what? And a lot of these things are really important. But you know what else is important is the core services, public safety, public health, and public works that we do here. And we're hearing from everyone about these big needs. And I, I just think that we have to have that hard conversation. And so I, I would entertain it. I think this is a start. I think I'd like to take the conversation a little, on another level, and talk about community program funding requests altogether. And it's not popular, so we'll.
I don't think it's not. I don't think it's not popular. I just think we have to make sure we do it in a way that's not destructive to the partners that we already have. And so I think you hit on what you, what you said, the glide path down. If we have the conversation, we have to make sure that we put rails up for our partners as well, and not just cut anybody off to the point that it's going to impact their missions as, at the same time. I think, and we have such a healthy budget right now, I think, because of, you know, how great this commission and commissions before have done, that we, I don't think we have to make any massive decisions to cut anybody off this year. But I do think that there's ways to go about things that are just easier for everyone.
I would certainly agree. I think we would do detrimental harm to community if we just said, sorry, we're done here. And, but I also, I can read the writing on the wall when I look at these outgoing years. I mean, we're going to have to make very difficult decisions, and the decisions need to lean towards our core services and not things that are squarely in the purview of what I consider core service of city government. So we just, I want to introduce the conversation. I think we need to have the hard conversation. I think we have a commission that's willing to have this conversation in a logical, reasonable way. I just think it needs to happen.
Yep, I agree.
Other thoughts?
I'll just, the policy, I know we've dabbled about this off and on. I am in agreement, a policy would be probably beneficial. My, my only hesitance is that, I can't even, I'm trying to think of an, of an exception that would just come up during the middle of the year, that needs our attention or our consideration. Is that, is that, I tried to read the policy again real quick.
So there's, if you look at the policy, and based even on the discussion today, I'm not sure, if you look at page two under procedures, line item A1, I'm not sure that this commission necessarily wants to be pulled every budget. What this policy is suggesting, that every year when we do this, we ask you, okay, what community development do you want to consider? I, I'm not even sure. I think we maybe just even take that out. Back to you, Commissioner Meitzner, there's, there's a budget process, and then there's outside-of-budget process. And outside-of-budget process gives her and I heartburn, because the commission, we spend four months here, setting a budget, and then the second it's ratified, we're immediately digging into it and trying to find dollars. And that's not a great place to be. It's not responsible governing. So we minimize, we, we always build in an exception, right? Because things come up during a year. That is, item B under procedures, outside-of-budget, it's a stringent process, and it refers back to policy statement B, three, policy statement B, where there has to be a, something has had to change. For example, the City of Wichita Police Department getting an out-of-sequence budget raise, out-of-budget sequence raise, forced the commission to face a sheriff's issue. That's out-of-sequence. It was not planned. The sheriff, when he set his budget last year, had no idea that was going to happen, but it does. And so we, we can't lock the commission out of dealing with exigency. So the policy has protocol for that, that if it's out-of-budget, but, but the bar is high. The bar is high to, to do that. And we purposely made it so. But we didn't say, you couldn't do it. So, because things change, things happen. So we've tried to build that into the policy.
And so, well, well said. And, but the, I think the only area that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, the, the area that we never know every year, what that number eventually is at the end of the year, one of them is the Economic Development Fund. It's budgeted every year, and we just don't know. So I guess if something was that important to us that would hit us, that we would have to say something, then it could go through the, the Brent process and, and possibly be funded through a economic development, if it had an economic development.
That's the way I view, and Lindsay and I talk a lot about the economic development portion of the budget, to where there's a budgeted amount, yet we know we only have so many actual expenditures going that way, but things come up in that arena. Chairman and I were at a meeting yesterday where there's other initiatives coming forward, where it's possible that G W P could come back, or W S U could come back, or somebody could come back and ask this commission for funding. The, the commission needs flexibility in that particular area. So I, I think that, to your, but it, it has to pass the bar, though. It has to pass the bar. If it doesn't get discussed at this table, and in August, when you vote, if it's not there, there has to be a tall bar to get over before we entertain that. And that's, that's the purpose of.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I would agree with that. I think what gives me more heartburn is that some of these things that we do, they're just perpetual. I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if county government should be entering into community programs on a perpetual basis. I think that if it doesn't fit the narrative of what you just described, these are emergent, these are, but we have things that are perpetual, and there's no, and there's no sunset, there's no contractual deadline. It's just an expectancy of funding every single year, and that's not going down. I think we need to have a hard conversation of what that looks like from county government. Commissioner Howe, you have any insight?
Yeah. I was here during the Quit the Cuts campaign. That was a lot of fun.
On the what?
Quit the Cuts campaign. Remember that whole thing? Oh, you don't remember that?
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
How could you not remember this? Quit the Cuts campaign. Yeah, you guys weren't here then, but.
I was across the street.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah. That was a lot of fun. You know, we did little haircuts here and there, and every one of those haircuts, I mean, give you an example, Wichita Arts Commission at the time was 10,000. They went from 10,000 to zero, and that just created a huge response in the community. I believe they received a lot more than 10,000 in private donations just to come back and get that money back. I, I think they received a windfall from the community. They said, we're going to support the Wichita Arts Commission, Wichita Arts Council. Now it's 15,000. You know, I don't know if you want to dabble with that at all, you know, or mess with that or not again. I don't know that we should do that. Riverfest, 10,000. You know, some of these things, we tried to trim, you know, Greater Wichita Sports Commission was 5,000. We, we trimmed that back at the time. These little tiny haircuts created a huge response from the community. These little tiny haircuts created a huge response from the community. And these are things that, to one of the commissioner's previous comments, people could give to these things if they wanted to, or they would find a way to find, you know, adjust their prices or something, and membership fees, they could cover the cost another way. I mean, I'm not sure this is the only option for them. But I remember that as a pretty important time in my time here at the county. I agree that we need to find a way to define what's core function and what's not. And part of the answer, I think, is if you can identify a portion of the budget that's a zero-sum game of dollars and have advisory input, that this is how the money should be spent. I'm not suggesting they would have authority to approve it, but they should make recommendations. I'm okay with that, but when someone says they want more money, it's going to have to come out of someone else's budget. I think we ought to be limited on what we do there. So, again, I think we have a role to play, but just because we have a budget and we have tax authority, doesn't mean we have bottomless pockets here. We can't just keep on raising more revenue and providing more funding to more things. There's a zero-sum game mentality that we need to have. So, if you want to fund senior centers, go find the $90,000 somewhere else in the budget. State legislature had a, I don't know if they still do this or not, but they have a pay-go policy, that if you want to fund your save-the-puppies fund or whatever thing that's important to you, you've got to go pull the money from someplace else in the budget and convince your friends and colleagues to vote for it. And someone's going to be upset when you pull the money. But somehow, we've got to find a way to put a cap on what we're doing here. And again, I don't want to, I think overall, the county is extremely efficient and effective and fiscally conservative. I think that we've, you guys have done a great job. Manager's done a great job. Lindsay and Lorian Yole have done a great job. Fiscal conservative policy has been a theme of Cedric County Government for a very long time. But having said that, the budget has alarming growth, and it's justifiable. But when you have a sheriff that says he needs more funding, or the DA needs more funding, or EMS has to have something, then that money's going to have to come from somewhere, and the taxpayers are done. We just cannot bury our head in the sand and expect to simply just do the same, same thing we've always done, just pass it on to the taxpayer without some type of review. I think it's time for us to look at some of these programs and find a way to sunset some of these. That would be, and by the way, I would love to get GWP and the Wichita Chamber of Commerce and our business friends around this community to support the county, rather than, what happened in 2016 was, it was an attack in 2015. It was an attack on the county. Even some of the organizations that we fund came back and attacked us, because we tried to solve, by the way, if you don't know, we had an $8 million shortfall that year, trying to solve an $8 million imbalance, and that's what caused that to happen. But rather than having support by our community partners and our organizations that receive funding, they turned around and attacked Cedric County. So, you know, I would love to get their buy-in on the front end. If we're going to try to do something different to sunset some of these things or to cap them, we need to have buy-in from the community. But I agree, raising taxes, raising the mill levy rate without a public vote, I can't support it. Thank you.
I had one thing. I'd be okay with taking that line out, that we would talk about a recommended amount of funds to be considered for the community development budget. I think if we have something there, it sets an expectation that we're going to spend it, and I think it tells the public that there's this money available for you to come apply for. I have no problem. I think it's a good thing if we don't spend all the money that we've expected to spend. And so, I just think that sets us up for expectations that we might not want to end up doing. So, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Not worth recording, anyway. Go ahead. Okay. Do you think you have something from the consensus here that we can work through? Probably not.
Well, I might just, I might just add that what Brent presented, he and Valerie just kind of crafted this on the fly, because three years ago, four years ago, we had zero on how to handle this. So, kudos to them for at least crafting some type of procedure. The policy takes it one step forward, and I think there's room for Brent's and Valerie's procedures within this policy. I think this gives us a starting point. Let me go back and visit with the staff again, because this is, this is yellow parchment here, it's five years old. We'll go back, we'll tweak it, we'll bring it back to a, to you in a commission meeting to discuss and ratify.
Let me ask one more question. A lot of these things that are on here, are these annual agreements, or are they multi-year agreements?
Some, a little bit of both.
Okay.
There's a lot of multi-year on there. I hear it loud and clear, and I appreciate that we don't want to pull the rug out from anyone here. That's never the intention, to do something in the middle of a budget year, but to at least start the discussion. We'll have further discussion on this tomorrow during Core Services and this last, the very last segment of this retreat. We'll have discussion, and maybe we could bring this back again tomorrow and kind of talk about a way forward on these. And I want to use our language very carefully here, because everything that the county does is important. I don't want a tier one, tier two, tier three, nothing. It's discretionary or obligated, I mean compulsory or discretionary, it's all important. So, we come back and we have some discussion on discretionary items, on what the commission's will is moving forward, and then we get into a discussion of, should it be paid for by property tax, or should we look at some type of sales tax? Then that kind of discussion can come forward tomorrow. But I think we have enough for today.
Okay.
Good. Your view?
Last thoughts for Brent? We're good, bud. Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. Brent, can you give us the quarterly financial report?
You have coffee?
Last item for today is debt policy changes that Lindsay will talk about.
Did anyone have a problem if I sit here and talk about it?
Nope.
As long as I can hear you.
I just, I don't have a PowerPoint, so there's no reason to be at the podium. Okay. So, this is another one of those times where I'm really excited and probably nobody else is. So, we have talked for some time about the debt policy, and what I'm going to remind you all of is that our current debt policy has some metrics that try and set how much debt we can issue, and that policy has been in place in some form or fashion for more than 20 years. We have made some tweaks over time, but it's really gotten to the point where, when you stop and critically think about the ratios that we're using, is it really makes sense? And what is the objective of our debt policy? So, we've had those conversations within finance. We have engaged with our bond council and with our municipal advisor to say, "Is there a better way to do this?" In the current policy, well, let's back up. The county can issue debt to do certain capital projects. We don't issue debt to fund normal vehicles or normal technology or anything like that. We're pretty judicious in what the policy allows us to do today. It allows us to do facilities. In 2020, the commission authorized Charter 69, which, because we are now an urban county, we have some ability to be more flexible with our debt than what we used to be. So, it used to be that we could only issue general obligation debt, which is the cheapest kind of debt we can get. We could only do that for county facilities within a three-block radius of the courthouse complex. Anything other than that, we had to do a different kind of debt, and we had to generally use the Public Building Commission to do that, and that was more expensive at that time. This building, yes, exactly. We are still paying off NCAT through PBC debt. So, back in 2020, with that urban designation, we're now able to issue general obligation debt for any county facility that we're going to use. And we were able to charter out of some of the restrictions that would say, "We could only have 0.5% of our assessed value worth of debt at any one time." And so, now where we are, we are well below our state limit on debt, which you can have 3% of your taxable, tangible, equalized value. We are below 10% of that limit right now, the lowest we've ever been. And so, what we have gleaned from that as a finance staff is, we are in exceptionally good shape on our debt. We know this because you also hear about it from your credit rating agency. So, in looking at the debt policy and these ratios, right now, the ratios say, "How much debt do you have per capita? What's your direct debt? How much is your direct debt plus everybody else's debt per capita?" And again, I've talked about this before, if you stop and think about it, that is an asinine measure, because who in this room pays every single tax levy in this entire county? You don't. I only pay one school district, one city, one county. I don't pay everybody's debt. So, that's not a fair measure of looking at how much debt we have and deciding whether issuing more debt is good or not. So, what this new policy looks, I shouldn't say new policy, this amended policy that you have a draft of should look like this. What it seeks to do is instead look at, how do we preserve our AAA credit rating? Because we're already so far below what the state mandates in terms of caps, that it's really not about that anymore. It's about making sure that we maintain our financial excellence in making decisions about debt. So, what you have is a redline version of the debt policy as it exists today. It is not in the pretty new format, because what we're seeking direction on today is whether we're headed in the right direction. We're not asking you to ratify this, because what we're going to do is come back to you with a whole package of policies at the end of this quarter. We're going to come with this policy, hopefully in some form, whether it's this or another, the capital improvement policy, as well as your investment policy, because there are some rules about how we manage and invest debt proceeds. So, I just want to get your feedback on whether we're headed in the right direction. So, just to walk quickly through some of the substantive changes on page one of this policy, it expands the group that actually comprises our debt management committee, so that Lorian, our Carly, our principal budget analyst who deals with debt, our principal accountant who deals with that, and our accounting director all sit together and make recommendations, because it affects all of us. It also takes out, on page two, what we look at. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes into this quarterly report that you receive every quarter. There is a tab called Capital Improvement Plan. It shows every single active project that's out there, how it's funded, what its budget is, how much is committed, what's going on. And so, because so much work has been invested in this, there's no point in creating yet additional reports and documents for our management. And then, we get to the meat and potatoes of it. So, if we come over to page three, you can see maximum amounts of debt financing has been completely replaced, and those benchmarks that we talked about are over here. Why are you looking at me like that, Chairman?
I was just...
Okay. It worries me when you're thinking and frowning at me. Okay. So, this is the old section. Hey, I'm going to call you out if you're giving me funny looks. It's the end of the day, we're all tired. Okay. So, these are the old benchmarks. This is what it's been replaced with. And what it's been replaced with is this. Standard and Horst is the preeminent credit rating agency in our country right now. There's S&amp;P, there's Fitch, and there's Moody's. But S&amp;P is by far the one that is most often used. Yeah, you don't have a handout, because this is a lot of pages, and I don't think you care that much. But I'm just telling you what it's based on. These are the calculations and scores that are tied to the criteria that are listed here. This is S&amp;P scorecard that they use when they rate our debt. So, they go through and they fill in all of these numbers in terms of what's our assessed value, what's our debt capacity, what's our, what are our economic conditions looking like? And they give us a score, and then depending on that score, they come in and give us a rating. And then they say whether that's stable, if it's kind of on watch, or if it's actually negative. And so, what you can see is, it talks about, under maximum amounts of debt financing, consideration of this new debt is going to take into account the preservation of our applicable credit rating, the tax burden that will be placed on citizens, and then it says that we're not going to do that unless, when we do it, it's going to satisfy the following benchmarks. And so, the following benchmarks are listed as considerations that you'll also see when Brent talks about the quarterly report, and when Hope comes up and presents your act for each year. And we think these are way more telling about our financial capacity and our community's ability to take on this debt than what we have today in these arbitrary ratio benchmarks that we have. So, you'll can see that we want to have the percentage of our budgeted general fund expenditures, our unrestricted fund balance is going to be at least 20%. Well, that's a beautiful thing, because that's already in our minimum fund balance policy, with a target of 30%. Well, right now, we're at 37%. So, we have a lot of room to continue to use fund balance strategically if we want to, without falling below that amount, but also still maintaining, that's S&amp;P standard, they want us at 30%. So, that still gives us a lot of flexibility. It wants us to have liquidity that's maintained of at least 120% of our total governmental fund debt service, and at least 20% of total governmental fund expenditures. If you remember governmental funds from any of the conversations that either Brent or Hope have had with you, we're talking about the whole gamut. It's not just our property tax funds. It's everything that we do. It's 911 tax fund, it's all of our operating. And so, when they actually do our calculation and look at us, we're at about 1,000% right now. So, we are in phenomenal shape from that perspective. So, we are well exceeding what S&amp;P tells us we have to have in terms of our liquidity. And then, to make sure that you all are still comfortable with controlling debt through this policy, it's not just about maintaining the AAA credit rating, is it talks about having net direct debt at less than 60% of total governmental fund revenues and debt service at less than 8% of total governmental fund expenses. And that matters, because when you think about it, we want to make sure that we are not ever in any position where we are forced to go to the taxpayers to compel them to do an increase to pay our debts. This makes sure that the cash we have, not anticipated cash, but the cash we have is always going to be enough to cover our obligations, even if we do new debt. And so, we think that these three measures will show that we consistently maintain financial excellence, and it will give us capacity to issue debt in whatever amount is necessary up to these thresholds. It's maybe going to be a little more flexible than our current policy, but not by a whole lot, because of that 8% of budgeted expenditures that you see. Other things that we changed in the policy, page four, we talked about that GASB lease standard that came in last year. That's going to begin to affect our books and our financials. So, we've incorporated that into the policy, so that as we're considering capital leases for debt, or for facilities, excuse me, we're able to make sure that we're keeping that as a consideration before we move forward with anything. It talks about our special assessment bonds. It doesn't really change a lot of the substantive meat of that, but it talks about how the debt management committee interacts with the county manager on that. Then we get a few more pages...
Lindsay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, on that, page four, so you deleted, "The county shall maintain a watchful attitude."
Yes.
You don't want to have a watchful attitude?
Well, I mean, we're going to have a watchful attitude, but when asked, what does that mean? It's really hard to define.
Just so I make sure.
So, it was a, it was a nice stab at terminology back in the day, but we can do better. But thank you for pointing that out, yes.
Lindsay, back on special assessments, though. Do we do special assessments for other things than roads and bridges for developments and so forth?
We have a number of special assessments that come to the commission for approval, and those are governed through, not just this policy, but we actually have a special assessment policy.
Neighborhoods, right?
Yeah. What I'm talking about are building new neighborhoods and so forth. Because we changed the, as I recall, the zoning regulations that say that they can only do it for 15 years. Do we need something in this?
It is in here. It's a little later in the section, where it talks about the structure of the financing for the different ones. So, we will get there.
It's clear.
Yes, it's crystal clear.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So, actually, if we move over, I'm going to just highlight that on page five, we start the debt administration and financing section, because that's where this is going to be. But if we actually flip over to page six, I thought that's where my special assessments was. We... Oh, I apologize. It's actually, it is back on page five. So, at the top of the page, it says, "Length of debts. The county normally shall issue bonds with a maximum life of 20 years or less for general obligation bonds, public building bonds, and revenue bonds." obligation bonds, public building bonds, and revenue bonds, and 15 years or less for special assessment bonds. So that's, I apologize, that's at the top of page five. But then, moving to page six, we took out the language that pertained, they used to call it a financial advisor, now it's technically called a municipal advisor. And so we've talked about how, instead of having discretion, where finance can use one, we're going to say we shall use one, because that continues to get more and more complicated, and we always want to make sure we have someone in our corner advocating for us and telling us what we need to know. Under temporary notes, at the recommendation of our bond counsel, we added a statement that said, we can do temporary notes if we want to. So if we're going to do a really big project, and we just need some cash on hand to get us through, that's an option we could pursue, though I don't really know that we'll ever want to. But we do what our bond counsel says. And then, those are all of the substantive adjustments. I do have a truckload of information I can send you about their, how S&amp;P calculates our ratings, and what that methodology is, if you'd like to nerd out with me. But otherwise, today, what we're looking for is general direction of, are you okay with this substantial change to the way we look at our debt, and whether we're going to do new debt? Or have we completely missed the mark, and we need to go back and look at things?
Well, what do we think?
I saw several yawns and attempts to cover yawns, so I'm sorry.
No, 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 it was good.
We put financing at the end of the day. It has been a long day, and this is not an exciting topic. No, it's okay. Debt should be boring. When it gets exciting, there's a problem.
No, I was, I was trying to understand how this impacts fund balance and budgetary things. I know the debt policy certainly impacts budget, because we pay, it's a price to our debt, there's a cost to our debt. I was trying to understand how it impacts our fund balance, and that was...
It shouldn't have a direct impact on fund balance. The only thing that it could have an impact on peripherally is if we start to plan to use fund balance more than we can under the terms of this policy, then we could under, we will understand immediately that our credit rating is at risk.
That's what I was trying to dissect in the redlining, so, okay.
So just, it will be the warning sign that troubles ahead, if we continue to see those numbers shrink in our ratios.
Well, I mean, there's a lot to digest here. Surface level, I don't see anything that I saw that was too alarming, but I would say that I haven't had a chance to really...
Right.
...dig through this yet. Pete, David, you guys?
I'm good.
Okay.
You're right, it's been around for a while and needs refreshed.
Yeah.
I was impressed when I first learned about our debt policy and our bonding, our repayment structure. It's pretty sound, from what was my independent observation when I first got involved in this, and so...
I agree.
Updating this is pretty reasonable, I'm sure.
Okay.
Well, and if this is okay, this is only the first step. We still will need to come and brief you on the policy once it's in the official format, the other policies that we want to do tied to it, and then get it on an agenda, so we can, we'll do two-two ones, staff it if you want to.
Well, from my view, I think that the recommended, if this is just the first step, and there's still other steps to come, and I have no process, I have no problem with the direction you're heading, I would say that. I have a shadow of doubt, but...
Well, if you guys wanted to keep the old policy, then we would just stop now.
No.
And I would be sad, but we would do it.
Okay, Jim?
So if I heard correctly, basically, this takes the external things that are not part of Sedgwick County's financial management, takes them out of consideration primarily, right?
It does, although it says that can be a consideration.
Okay. I cannot remember the details, I'm sitting there trying to think of what it was, but years ago, I think you and I had conversations, I advocated for moving away from the existing policy to something more like this. I don't know that this is exactly what we talked about, but I do think this is a better measure, I guess. So I think that, overall, again, I agree, I need to read this more carefully, but I think overall, this is probably a step in the right direction, more flexibility. And I don't mean anything against any other municipality around us, but I think our finances are in very good shape.
Yes, they are.
And I hate to see municipalities, or schools, or whatever, have their budgets and their decisions impact what we do here.
I agree.
And that's the concern. I think what we, or might financially, fiscally conservative, and we're managed very well, I want to be able to get that AAA rating and enjoy those low-interest rates, and basically reap that reward for being well-managed. It makes sense, right?
I think so.
So I think so, too. Thank you.
Todd?
Well, whenever you come before us, and we're going to incur debt, you always go through all the criteria that we have to meet in order to incur that debt, and some of those criteria don't ever make any sense. So hopefully, this clears some of this up, so that when you go through and brief us, that we meet all the requirements in our policy, that you don't have to say, well, we'll never ever get close to this one, or this one, and this one. So it might clear it up a little bit as we go through that process.
It should, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Okay, I think you got what you need there. I'm moving us forward.
Okay, can I, can I give you two homework assignments before we break for the day? You got two pretty sheets that you've seen before, and I say homework, they're not really homework. It's just more to have as your backdrop to tomorrow's conversation with Tom about priorities and services. So this sheet, and I'll hold it up for the room, if you can see. It's just a single, long sheet. And what it has are our county stats, and this is one where Commissioner Howell set us up perfectly for this conversation about how efficient we are. And I'm just going to point out a couple things that I want you to take home with you tonight, is you consider what you're facing. If we look at our assessed value in this community, since the Great Recession, we've gone up 47%. At that same time, if you look at row six, inflation has gone up 39%, but your property tax levy has only gone up 37.7%. That's on row four. And so you are less than inflation, you are less than the assessed value of our community. And I think that is something that's incredibly awesome to talk about. And then, I really want you to be proud of yourselves, because I want you to look at row eight, which is personal income. That is the amount of value earned and reported at a federal level for our community from all income streams. We don't have data for 2023 yet, but for 2022, we were up to 31.4 million. So at the same time that CPI was going up, and assessed value was going up, personal income in this community, and granted, this isn't everybody, but still, that value has gone up 49%. So on the whole, you have stayed below most of these measures. Now, on the flip side, and I will say too, even if you look at your total expenses in property tax funds, you stayed below inflation. But if we look at our health insurance costs, those have gone up 65% in the same time. Our pension costs, which again are set by the state, 121%, nearly three times inflation. Your utility costs have pretty well stayed on par with inflation, but your elections costs have gone up 63%, in large part, we know, because of an increase in the number of voters and different expectations. We know also that sheriff costs have gone up just a bit above inflation. And again, we don't like the term, I know, wage war, but you are put under, the sheriff in particular, is put under a lot of pressure from other community agencies that we have zero control over. Again, then let's look at our services operated on behalf of the state. So these are the bottom-line numbers that come from this big other table that you have, that's two pages, that's at your seats, if you flip to that back page. What you'll see here is that you have increased your spending on those state services by 15%. At the same time, the state has decreased their contributions by 12%.
Wow.
And then if you look at your state actions, this is my least favorite or most favorite, depending on how you want to look at it. Look at what the state actions have done to us in that time. I know that we've talked about LEVTR and CCRS, and those are probably dead in the water, but look at those dollars that otherwise should have come to this community, and the kept, state kept that money that was given up in exchange for this over that time. That's the part that galls me. Commercial machinery and equipment, which has resulted in the shift from commercial property to residential taxpayers paying more, look at that impact. Mortgage registration fees, just the impact that, from the full phase-out that happened in 2019, because of all those refundings and things that happened over the last few years, look at how much more revenue would have been generated under that old formula. And then, right underneath, it shows you the actual value from those mortgage registration fees, just so you can contrast those two figures. So if you look at row 29, what's our conclusion? The property tax levy has grown less than personal income, much less than growth in assessed value. Many expenses, like state-set contribution rates, have far exceeded your inflation. If you look down at row 31, if you look at some of our costs of doing business that we come and harp to you about every year, where we just don't have any control, if we look back to 2008, your software and hardware maintenance has gone up 230%. Property insurance, 930%, and all it does is continue to go up. Inmate medical, 105%, inmate food, 75%, overtime, 73%. And then, of course, the thing, because compensation and compensation stability has been something I've heard from this commission, our total employee take-home has gone up 18% in that time, just based on some generalized average numbers. Not all of that is our fault, because the state did increase the amount of capers that we all have to pay as employees in the middle of that, but still, there's work to do. And then, my final thought that I want to leave you with, so that you can ruminate on this tonight, is row 54, and that is our reliance on property tax, and because we talk so much about property tax. If you look at how much we actually have collected in terms of property taxes from 2008 to 2023, you can see we went from 121 million to 167 million. The total revenues in those funds, you can see how much it has increased. The proportion, then, has gone from being 51% at the time of the Great Recession, to now we are 55% relying on property tax. And again, I'm going to point your attention back to row 25, that a lot of that has now shifted away from commercial, from our bigger businesses, to residential taxpayers. So yes, our property tax levy, well, has maintained pretty well compared to all the other indicators. It's up, and it's our residential folks. And so there's a lot of reasons for all of this, nothing is complex, we can't just blame one group, but this is kind of your picture for where we stand today. Yes, sir.
Remind me, on the line 26, mortgage registration?
Mm-hmm.
What was, we talked about, I heard before, what was, what happened in 2020? How was that 276 million? What was that about?
That would have been when, remember, all the interest rates dropped, and so people started refinancing and filing their mortgages like crazy? And so we would have gotten .0025% of the values of those. And so Tanya's office, I can't see Tanya, where is she? There she is. She sends us monthly reports of what's happening with the indebtedness and the number of activity. And so this comes from just sheer the value of debt that was filed at that time. Now, of course, nobody in 2014, when this started, had any clue anything like this would have happened. And I'm not sure I would have known what to do if we'd gotten that much money. But it's just a matter of...
I would have known what to do.
There you go. Other people would have known what to do.
14 mil levies, what we'd have.
Well, one-time money, anyway.
So it wasn't, it wasn't a single registration, or...
No, 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 no. I mean, and you could, and Tanya can speak to this if she wants to, but there were, I mean, just the sheer volume of filings was higher than we've seen in a long, long time. And Tanya, if I'm, or Kenley, if I'm saying anything wrong, throw something at me. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No, nothing's being thrown, so I'm okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's your homework. I was doing it back to her. I was being...
Stand by.
Justin's going to talk.
Mr. Wagner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Make a quick comment on a bill that I know Jason Watkins had reached out about fairly recently in our office, just out of time. Kirk Sponsel recently had a chance to review it. I will point out, it's a bill that has to do with zoning measures, it's House Bill 2704. At this point, we have not yet heard back from planning staff on it, but I would comment that this particular bill, and I think most of you, perhaps with the exception of you, Chairman, or Commissioners, a couple years ago, when we had a really broad-ranging bill dealing with home-based businesses, that I know we had concerns about, that essentially it would have thrown open the doors very broadly to home-based businesses. The new bill, it's called a No-Impact Home-Based Business, I would summarize it as, it would have an impact on our zoning code and enforcement abilities within Sedgwick County. I know one of the things that Kirk identified is, for example, we're talking about short-term rentals, is something the Commissioners are wanting planning staff to look into in the Planning Commission. It would probably limit your ability to regulate that, it would limit other areas on home-based businesses, and what you could be able to do with those, perhaps. I think primarily, this would be, would limit local control on some of these matters. We have a very robustly developed rural home occupation code within the zoning code, that I think was developed about 10 or 15 years ago. So I mentioned all of this, there's a hearing on this bill Monday morning at nine o'clock. I apologize for the short notice on this, but again, it is pretty fast-moving. In communicating some with Jason, he didn't think that the chamber's likely to take a position on this particular bill. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, this is something I haven't spent too much time working on. I would say, if there was any interest on the board's part in taking a position on this, I think it'd be very general in terms of something along the lines of, hey, this is a local issue, that we have zoning codes that deal with this. I think generally, Board of County Commissioners likes to be able to have control of zoning issues at a local level, as opposed to having state restrictions on those items. But I defer to the board, and certainly, we could wait until later if you want to have input as well. Any questions on that? Okay. At this point, I think we just probably wouldn't do anything unless the board has an interest, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you very much.
That's good, thank you. Very good. We're done. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thanks for the discussion. Nine o'clock tomorrow morning, this room. See you then.